We will call the meeting to order. I guess you can leave your cellphones on, I guess. It's in the script to silence them, but. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Coloney.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll stand for invocation and remain standing for the pledge, please.
Would you few pray with me? O divine presence, we come together this evening grateful for the gift of another day, for the blessings you have shared with us, the opportunities we've been given to be a blessing to others. We acknowledge our own fears and our anxieties about our present time. In times such as these, we seek your guidance, wisdom, strength, and support as we continue the task of making important decisions that impact our community. We ask your blessings upon our mayor, our city commissioners, and the city officials that they may use their best skills, resources, and judgment with regard to the matters placed before them. Give direction and understanding to all who are placed in positions of leadership and service in our community, in our schools, our workplaces, medical facilities, places of worship and recreation, and throughout our neighborhoods. Provide protection for our medical providers, first responders, law enforcement officers, and all who are serving our community faithfully, day and night, to protect the well-being of all our citizens and those who visit our community. Take away the fear, anxiety, and feelings of isolation and despair. This coronavirus has stirred in many of us and throughout our world. Help us all as leaders and citizens of New Smyrna Beach. Engage in healthy discussions tonight. Respect our differences. Practice random acts of kindness. And honor social distancing in order to validate the worth of every human being as we strive together to create and maintain a healthy, wholesome, and unified community. As we work together for the common good of all, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of unity and charity. In the name of divine love with many names, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item up, approval of the agenda. Before we do that, just so we're crystal clear on one item, I want to be very clear on item, what would that be? Eight. C is a quasi judicial public hearing. They do have an attorney that's present that wants to make sure he's a part of any discussion on that item. So as we go through this, I don't, it won't come up before then, but if it does, we'd have to defer all of that until he is in the room, present. So in these extraordinary times, taking what measures we have to take, and that's one we're going to take for tonight, which is how we normally do it anyway, but just want to be clear. Any other changes on the agenda? Callid, yes?
If we could move mayor's permission report right after public participation. There's some decisions that you might have to make in that discussion that might affect some of other items, so I would suggest that we move it just right after the public participation.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Any objections to that from the commission? All right, and I think one of those items we'll be talking about is, I think, city attorneys probably briefed all of us, but there's certain items that we're probably not wanting to go into great discussion on today, trying to continue those, but trying to make some decisions about how long we should continue those. So that won't be for discussion then. If no other changes to the agenda, no announcements or presentations. Public participation, Kelly, have we received anything?
No, we have not.
So just to be clear, we, obviously, I think each of us received probably what feels like hundreds or thousands of emails, but there were none that were specifically sent to the clerk for reading into the public participation part of the agenda today. Last I checked, there wasn't any public out there. Chief, is anybody walked up since that's different that would like to participate? One person, all right, come on in. Temperature check first. So I'm just going to have them stand right in the middle of that aisle right there so they're not touching anything. Actually, just, we're going to have you stand right here in the middle aisle, actually, just come up right in between those chairs right here to the front, and yep, you can speak from right there. Right there is good, just so you don't touch anything else.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No problem. I actually wasn't here to speak. I felt like I was ushered in.
Oh.
However, I'm with Yellowstone Landscape. I think we have a consent agenda.
Yep.
D, I believe.
Yep.
Okay. So if you have any questions for me, then I am here to answer them.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr.
Appreciate it, all right. Nope, go, yeah, go, go on out. We'll call, we'll.
Actually, head on out.
Yeah. Going out, we'll call you in if we need you. We're trying to keep it to 10 people in the room to follow CDC guidelines, and we're kind of flirting around that number as we speak. All right, no others for public out there? Thank you all. All right, we'll close public participation. We go to mayor and commission comments. We'll come down the line, but let's just lead off. I'll start off with this one item. We have a regularly scheduled meeting on the 18th and another one on the 28th. I would suggest, gentlemen, that we put, that the items, if we choose to postpone items tonight, that we postpone those until the 28th. That gives us flexibility on the 14th if we do have to have a meeting, if it's remote or something like that, or even if we have to cancel it, we're just not having to worry about trying to continue those one more, one more time. So that's my initial comment, and then we'll lead off with any other mayor and commission comments, but just make sure to speak to that one specifically. We'll start with the vice mayor.
Okay. There is one item that I would like to see carried. That would be item 8B. It could generate quite a bit of public interest, and I would like to see that put off if possible.
So I think what we'll do is as those items come up, we will, I think we have to make the motions like as those items come up, right, Carrie?
Okay.
So I think the real question, though, is just the dates that we're going to do that to. So meeting on the 14th or the 28th? My suggestion would be the 28th.
That's fine by me.
Okay. Anything else for mayor and commission reports?
Yes. There's one thing I do want to say regarding working at home. I don't think the public really understands how we've been setting the standard here all along. When a week before the meeting, we get a 1,200 or a 1,500-page agenda, we do that at home. We spend hours, I hope everyone up here is spending hours, reviewing that so we're prepared. So working at home is very important. I'm sure a lot of people are figuring out how to do that, and I applaud that effort. There are obvious changes that we're making in the way we operate our business on a day-to-day basis. I'm confident that our staff is in the forefront, everything I've seen. I'm very proud of the way the actions have gone on. I do have three items that I would just like to have, I would mention that we have a loading zone issue where we're working on reports for that. We have Brandon Center issue regarding possible changes to bring more business in and involve the Canal Street merchants with. And we do have our land development regulations where I'm looking to have some real wholesale changes done before we reach the end of this year. One item we're talking about on the agenda is from something that was set up a number of years ago. So we have to prepare ourselves for the future by making these amendments regarding protecting the environment and having usable properties in our PUDs. So I don't want to report on them now. I just want to kindly remind our staff that I'm going to be looking, once we get past this item, for some action in that regard. Other than the coronavirus, I'm glad to see all of our businesses and our residents are handling it very well. I think it took a little time for our visitors to catch on that they should be behaving and following the rules. And it seems things have calmed down within the community. Probably the only area I see where it has excessive use is the boat ramps. There are boats and trailers parked all over the place. I don't want to discourage people from getting out on the water, but we have capacity issues, and we're going to have to address them. Basically, that's it.
Okay. We'll go, I think, we'll just go that way. Commissioner McGurk, can you go next?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, staff, fire, police, everybody who's been, has, life has been upheaved by this, especially all the first responders and, you know, department heads who are basically changing their lifestyle and operations on the fly. Doing something similar with my business, completely 180 degrees on how we always did things. So I'm happy to see everybody here. I'm happy to see that we have no major outbreak in this community yet, and hopefully it'll stay that way, and I'm glad to see everybody that I know is healthy and well. The one comment I wanted to make, the prevailing thought or concern around the country and in the state of Florida is the exodus of New York residents who are trying to flee their outbreak. This seems to be their number-one destination is Florida. We have not been hit too hard yet. I am deeply concerned that we can't. I would urge you, if you know anybody, friends, neighbors, even family, to not risk other states, the kind of outbreak they're experiencing, and to try to stay home and hold up. Do not possibly bring this virus in large numbers here and have a lot of community spread due to travelers coming from outside the state. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Sacks, go next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So far, so good, for the most part. I think a very large part of this epidemic is the panic in the mental portion. It's played heavily on our city, a little bit on my family. We're all responsible. We all have families, grandparents, extended family, and I'm concerned mostly for them. As Commissioner Hartman would know, as firefighters, we've been through a lot of different diseases. We're familiar with epidemics, and we know what outcomes may lie. But we are kind of a funnel for central Florida's tourists, and still a fine mecca. Fortunately, we haven't seen an outbreak in our city. I'm still very concerned that the county has not helped, and I'm saying this in a kind way, they have not helped the situation by keeping some of our venues open. I know the state has their purview as far as restaurants and bars. Look, frankly, I would rather see a man able to go to work after two weeks of being out of work or never having to have the chance to go at all. To risk a grandparent or even somebody now we're finding out from 20 to 50 years old could be a possible target for this epidemic. So I think our city, we should have a discussion even sometime today at any further measures that we can take to ward off being that kind of target-rich environment. Again, I'm not an epidemiologist, but coming through Miami Beach and the HIV threats we had there, that plague came on so suddenly, and it could happen here as well. So being the wonderful city that everybody wants to visit, let's see if we can take some measures on our own. I know it is the county's beach. I was quite upset that we did not close the beach. It's my personal opinion. As a civic leader, I think we should all share our personal opinions there. I do feel very bad for the restaurant and bar owners. We spoke to some of them. We spoke to the actual workers, the people that own those services. They're very scared and concerned. And for all other service employees in the city and our own personnel, hats off especially to our first responders. I know what threats they face. But I think we should talk a little more about this relationship with the county and on what we can do to better protect what seems to be our elderly population is at most risk now. Thanks for your time.
Okay. So my suggestion would be, let's get through these items so we can get the folks that are here, and then at the end, I think we do need to talk through, we've got the event schedule that was given to us. I think we, at a minimum, need to do that and to make some decisions. And so I think at that point, we'll have a little time to talk about any other measures we might want to try to take. But I'd like to get everybody cleared out as much as, as much as possible on those items. For the two of you, just want to be clear, are you all okay with, for any items that are postponed, shooting for the 28th for both of those versus 14th? Commissioner Sacks, sorry. Commissioner Hartman.
All right. I won't go into it. You know, I share the same sentiments as the rest of us up here on the dais on how well staff has stepped up and taken over, of course, police and fire. You know, they don't get the option to stay home and work from home, unfortunately. But I do have one thing on my mind that we were supposed to do our evaluations in early April, and we were supposed to have an agreement on a form to use, and we've not even discussed that yet. So I've asked the city manager if maybe the HR director could give us a form or maybe one or two that, in particular, and that we could go ahead and do that process, because I think that, we made that commitment to the citizens months ago, that we were going to do these evaluations, and we were going to do them before the budget process, early in the budget process. So I think it's important that we do that. If we can just get that done before that April 28th meeting, I certainly would appreciate it, and I have no problem with waiting until then on anything that gets tabled.
Okay. Question for you on that. You're saying just to have HR basically kind of take the best of what they saw from all of ours and give us a recommended form that we would all use? Because obviously, we probably have a lot of time to discuss and agree upon a forum between now and April 28th if that's the target.
Right. I ask if she, she could just look and see what we did the last time and see if there was some commonality in there, or if, if maybe we, you know, we all used one or two of the same forms or something.
Okay.
But, you know, if not, then we'll just play it by ear like we did last time. I just think it's important that we get, get that done. We need to keep some normal.
Agreed.
Normalness in our lives, if that's a word.
We'll see, yeah.
And, you know.
Okay. All right. I support that. See, if, if, for Nina can just send, send something over, and I'd say we can probably all just take a little latitude. We'll take the form that she provides as a base, and then as we did last time, I think everybody kind of put their, their spin on it. To me, that conversation is always a bit, you know, it's meant to be a communication tool. It's meant to facilitate communication, like that's meant to kind of capture and facilitate communication. So whatever that form looks like is really just a way to capture, hopefully, a series of conversations, because performance isn't something that just you talk about one time. You know, if I have, if I have issues with any performance, I'm going to, they're going to know it long before early April, I can tell you that, so. Okay, is that it? Do you have any other items? Okay, thank you. So most of my items are really kind of directly related to our response and other measures we might want to consider, so I would say, I do thank staff, again, first responders, it's all been said, especially that Callid. You know, a lot of, a lot of pressures on city leaders at this time, you know, to be available 24/7, making quick decisions, and I've been, I've enjoyed working with Callid through this. I think we've made some, some quick calls that have been the right calls. Saturday, for instance, was going, as everyone was responding to the to-go order that was put in place by the governor, maybe Friday, maybe Saturday, I don't remember, it's all running together, but whenever that came out, was going around and visiting some of the businesses, talking to them, and it came up what the land had done with providing the spots for the to-go parking where the businesses were directly curbfront. So talked to Callid, and he supported that, rolled out, rolled that out as a temporary measure. So I think we're making some, some quick calls, but the right calls, and I appreciate his availability. He's not, he's not taking weekends off, and this isn't a, he's not a home with the feet kicked up by the pole right now, and so I appreciate him. And, but really, the rest of the staff, because I know it's not him, there's a whole team behind him that's facilitating that. So hats off to all of them as we will get through this. All right, with that, consent agenda, and I also support moving things to 28th, and then we'll talk about whether or not, we'll talk about that April 14th meeting when we talk about all of our regularly scheduled stuff. Any items to pull from the consent agenda? We'll just start, sorry, Callid, yes?
Just one on the item for consent agenda regarding the budget amendments.
Yep.
If you could pull that item out, because we gave you on the dais a revised budget amendment. Thanks to Commissioner Hartman, we pulled it out one thing, and so.
It's item A. Okay. So item A, we're going to pull. Any other items? Jake will start, or Commissioner Sacks, we'll start with you.
I don't have too much, just a question or two. You'll bear with me, please, the sun is right in my eye.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
And C.
Okay.
You said D and D.
C.
And C. And a really quick comment on G.
All right.
And I'm sorry, a quicker comment on I.
Okay.
I've got the whole thing there, don't I?
All right. Commissioner McGurk, anything left to pull?
No, Mayor, I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Coloney?
The only one I was going to pull was A.
Okay. Commissioner Hartman?
I think Commissioner Sacks already pulled it.
I think he, yes.
The one I had, so.
Okay. There's at least a 50% chance he did. All right, Commissioner, Callid, you want to start on item A? You want to explain that one, and then we'll, let's see if my, Commissioner Coloney has any?
I have to do that.
Oh, sorry, yes. Yeah, let's do, so, do I have a motion to adopt the rest of consent agenda? So that's items B, E, F, H, and J. B, E, F, H, and J.
No move. Second.
City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Callid, A.
So, then the one that was attached to the agenda, which was Exhibit A, it had $2,500 for marine discovery stuff, but the commission, two meetings ago, they agreed to give $10,000, with 7,500 in this fiscal year and 2,500 for the next fiscal year.
Yep.
So staff, we forgot, we put the 2,500, so we took it out. The other items is.
So to be clear on that one, so do we just need to not do anything with this and get it corrected, or are we going to approve the corrected one?
Yes, we took it out. This revised one is actually, we took the 2,500 out.
Okay, got it.
And then Commissioner Coloney, during the briefing, he had some questions about what's in the budget amendment. We have some police function and fire function adjustments. Typically, what happened during the budget, they would have an estimated number, so they estimated it like 18-something percent. The actual, from ground round, is 25.5%. So that's what's there, and then you got the funding for the turf at the sport complex. You got $400,000 from NECO, and then, so you need $550,000 from the general fund to make the 950,000. So that's what the estimate.
Okay. We're on consent agenda, is that, is that what you were trying to find out for him?
They can't hear Callid out, the speaker's out there.
Oh, gotcha. All right, yeah, just, don't touch the podium and speaker out there. All right. You don't have to repeat all that, they'll, they'll pick it up. Okay, Commissioner Coloney, any other items or anything, comments on A?
No, basically, my, my comments are looking forward comments. I'm glad to see we have the adjustment for the turf. It's a big chunk of money, and we have to be very careful about things we're doing in the future, because when it comes around the budget time, I want us to have a nice, compact budget. So this is an item we all voted for, including myself, but we're going to just have to be really careful when we start adding other projects down the line. So that's my comments.
Okay. Do I have a motion on item A?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jake, item C?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure, a quick question for Callid. In that contract for building maintenance services, Alonso Babe James does its own services?
Yeah. In this contract, Leaguer Services.
Just go there. Just stay over there for now.
Leaguer Services buildings, such as the Brandon Center and the Coronado Civic Center, and Babe James, they are being maintained by a staff, and that is Michael Booth. Michael has worked for the school board for a long time, and he does a good job, and they like to clean, especially Babe James, probably twice a day, so that's what he does.
Thank you. Well, kudos to him.
Okay. Have a motion on item C?
I'll just.
Motion approved.
Do you have another question on that? Sorry.
Just a comment on it, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I, too, had discussed this with Callid. I wondered why we were seemingly separating one facility out, and I didn't want it to appear we were, we were doing anything different in Babe James, with how I understand, that it is our procedures to Babe James and two other facilities, including Coronado, are taken care of in-house, so.
Yes.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. I believe I heard a motion, but just for clarity, Jake, you made a motion to approve item C?
Yes.
Okay, I have a second. City Clerk?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item D, Commissioner Sacks?
Yes, I have reported it. This is probably the third year I would hope and wish that Yellowstone would blow their clippings into the grass where it is supposed to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks, I have taken your, your concern, and I talked to Faith, and we talked to Yellowstone, and Faith will give you a report on that.
The Yellowstone guy, Melissa.
Yeah, Will is here.
Yeah.
I didn't know he was going to be here. They do not do that. It's a strict policy that they do not blow clippings into the drains. What you might see along the road is that some property owners, commercial property owners, still use their own commercial lawn mowers to mow, and it's possible that it's them. You might see them with the yellow vest or the orange vest, but it's them. Yellowstone has an extremely strict policy not to do that.
For your benefit, though.
I hope they, thank you, Faith, I.
And I have a email confirming that, and they, they don't do that. You might be seeing others, and if we see them, we try to stop them and tell them they're not allowed to do that.
If they continue, then not to.
The concern was about blowing grass clippings into.
The storm drain.
The storm drains. So been informed that's against your policy, you don't do that, and we hope that you maintain that. Don't touch that podium.
Yes, sir.
Put your hands in your pocket.
So Yellowstone Landscape has a very strict policy against blowing into drains, safety policies and such, so we do not practice that. It's against the Watershed Act of 1954, which I would hope you, you guys are probably familiar. If you're not, it is.
You don't have to explain the whole act.
Okay.
We'll go look it up.
Okay.
Those are your practices, please follow them.
Yes, sir, we absolutely do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Motion to approve item D?
I got a question.
Oh, sorry.
That was one of mine.
Don't leave.
So it actually would be to Faith, I would guess. I was wondering what the, what the cost difference between number one and number two were? I didn't see that in the report.
Sorry. Number, well, number one, it was an RFP, so it wasn't low bid, so number one was Yellowstone So number one was Yellowstone at 469,560. The next company, Ground Check, was 521,450.
Okay. All right.
All right. Do I have a motion on item C? No, D, sorry, D.
Move to approve D.
I'll second.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Sachs?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item G, Commissioner Sachs?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G, gentlemen, this is the beginning of a traffic study for traffic lights for the fire stations. Amen to that, that's my only comment. I, I don't require a vote, well, I guess I do now.
We gotta vote on it, yeah?
Yes.
All right, item G, motion?
To approve.
Comment?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
Um, you know, my, okay, Brian. My, my concern was if we do a traffic study now with, with, without the visitors coming into town, how bad that would skew it, if we could use the old study, if that thought would accept that. Um, that would be much better, and then would also save us some money that we wouldn't have to repeat something, that we could use a previous one.
Um, that's a really good question. We asked our consultant that. We may be able to use the data from a couple of years ago at, at full demand if we're in that situation. We'll work with DOT, though, we may have to still do some counts, but, um, the, the emergency signal is warranted. We just need to get a warrant for the full signal.
Okay.
So that's what this would do, but we'll have to work with whatever counts are available.
Well, well, hold on a second.
If they do a count now, let's throw it away.
Exactly, and if, so, and again, I'm not pretending to know exactly what the, what the procedure or policy is. But if they wanna count, and we do it now, and it's way under where something needs to be, now we're giving them the evidence they need to deny it. So I, so I wanna make sure if we go ahead with this study, that we don't get stuck with that, and we say, but, 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 but their, but their bureaucracy and red tape.
So what we, what we'll do is we'll look at using previous counts. Counts is one component of the warrant analysis, it's not the full, there's additional components, there's engineering judgment. So we will hopefully be able to use the older counts, which are more valid of a full rush hour, for example.
Yeah.
We may need to supplement those at some point, but I think we work with DOT to not use right now.
We, we gotta go with a backer delay until we're back to normal behaviors.
DOT has given support for this project at a full signal, so I think they'll work with us.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brian, one quick question. Uh, in the report, it showed 50 and 52. Right now, you showed 50 and 52, but we're talking about 50.
There's one study that covered both for the emergency signals, this agenda item is just for 50.
Thank you.
All right. I believe I had a motion, but for clarity, I think Commissioner Sachs, do you make a motion on that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sachs? Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Sachs, last one, item I.
I, I just wanted to make sure, Khalid, please. Uh, I had seen earlier that the basketball court over at Pettus Park may have to have funding from CDVG, but when we last discussed it, it wa, it wasn't really clear if we had everything together for the... Okay, please, thank you, that's all.
Do I have a motion to approve item I?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? City Clerk?
Sorry, can I give you a second?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner McGurk?
Thank you. Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sachs?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, item 7A. The resolution would approve assistance under the fine for the Buena Vista fishing pier repair or replacement. City staff, I think we need Kyle out there. This is gonna go down as the oddest meeting in, in history. Brian, nobody's out there for any consent stuff still, right? No other staff? Okay. Okay. Faith, is that who you're looking for? All right, she's here, come on in. That's her. So we're talking about the, the fine grant, the fishing pier. If you just wanna give your, your report, staff report?
Um, basically, there's a, there's quite a bit of detail in here. That pier has deteriorated significantly. Uh, we've had our city engineer, our marine engineer, and our building official all look at it. We feel that it should be closed immediately. Um, we also looked at the possibility of, you know, replacing the cross bracing along there, but we've been warned by a marine company that if you did that, the pilings are so insecure that you might not even have a place to reattach them, and they don't, don't feel it would work. So it's an extreme measure, I know, but we are recommending that it be closed. Trying to, you know, not to say the wrong word, but to Band-Aid it, to, you know, to try to keep it open. I don't think, I personally think it's a safety concern. So, there's a possibility of going to the fine grant, and the one that we were recommending, the cost to the city, it's a pre-agreement engineering expenses. So the cost to the city this fiscal year would be $43,800 if we went with that option. And then you could apply for the, you would fund the remaining portion in your new budget year, which would be 340,000. It's, it's a significantly expensive pier to replace. The total project is 698,400, including engineering fees. That's the estimate, if I missed something.
So, if, if I may, and Kyle, you probably can get into this, but if we closed it now, and let's say we went through this whole process with fines, from, from today to reopening, what kind of a timeline is, is that?
We're looking probably about a year, a year, a month or two months. Because you submit in March, and you won't get the agreement until probably November, and then you just have to put it out to bid. So you're looking at almost exactly the same time as now, that you'll be able to start construction. But I just wanna point out one thing, that, that Brian and I went down to the, to the pier, we looked at it. The only thing that we could not see is the bottom of the pilings. So when they do their design, we might have, we might save some costs if we could save some of the pilings, because they might, you might have some few that they're not that good, but... But I, overall, I think it's, I was thinking, if we do the bracing on it, if the pilings were good, we probably could save maybe a year. But the concern that I have is we couldn't dive to see the bottom of the pilings, so... That's why I supported the recommendation with Faith to go ahead and submit the grant.
Okay. Questions, Khalid, on the commission, Commissioner Sachs?
Khalid, the small pier to the south, adjacent to the playground, that's serviceable, right?
Yes.
And we'll have to use that one, I guess.
That, that pier, the decking and everything was replaced as of the hurricane, after really...
Very good.
That was replaced in 2017, I think.
You expect people to fish from the bridge instead?
They're not supposed to.
Right.
I don't think I've seen lately anybody from the, from the North Carswood Bridge, actually. They might go to the side, but...
Would the state be responsible to place a sign if they had to?
About fishing off the bridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
That was, fishing off the bridge, that's a pastime in this community, I can't believe we... So, we'll close down the, the pier, the pier will, the structure will still remain for the time being. And they can shorefish, correct? Is there a place where they can shorefish?
There's not really.
No.
Not through there.
Mangroves.
Well, they're fine, okay, well, mangroves, they won't, may not find their way, but if it's just rocky, they may find their way out there, kinda like the jaddy.
They can shore off, off the pier, but not on the pier itself.
No, no, what I'm saying is shorefish towards the structure. Okay.
There, there's not a lot of shore that's available, though. I can, I've, I've waded out there and done some wade fishing through there, and it's, it's not, you, you gotta get out in the water, you can't...
Because you got the mangroves on some of the, on the sides, so...
All right. I just, I, I don't, if people do find a way to shorefish, I don't wanna, you know, let's, let's try to accommodate them. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Uh, I did take a trip on that pier. I'm surprised we haven't closed it already, because it is in poor condition. Uh, the pilings may be fine, any repair attempt would be a waste of money. Uh, the biggest hazard I see right now is not the pier collapsing, it's the railings. If you have two people that get in a little pushing and shoving, they're gonna go right through those railings. Uh, the decking's in poor condition, that I could tolerate, but with the railings, it's just a, it's a bad situation. Uh, I do go down to that park occasionally, it's the closest one to me, and for one reason or other, I've always gone on the other pier, so I never looked at that one. Uh, so that's one thing I would like to see done right now. Now, as to submitting of the fine grant, as I read through it in your review, uh, you said there's a possibility that, uh, once we do the engineering design, which I do support, that if there is a funding issue for next year, which really concerns me, that once we get the grant, we could conceivably ask for an extension on that? Would we have to include the bud, the money in our budget now, one way or the other?
I don't know about extension, but what I was saying is, by the time we do the budget, the budget is done in September. Hopefully, by that time, we know how the budget is, because they would not give you the approval on the, the actual agreement until November. So you could withdraw before that. Now, you cannot take the, the grant and then ask for the extension immediately. Typically, what happens is when you're under construction, and you have an issue that you could ask for a time extension.
So one way or the other, we're gonna have the budget for the actual construction cost next year. And then, um, if we do have a cash flow problem, that we could conceivably ask for it to be extended into the next year.
Hopefully, we'll do that before, before they go into their boards, before we actually have the agreements. I would rather to do that. I don't wanna have the agreement and then withdraw it.
Before we get the grant, is what you're saying, yeah?
As long as we're gonna close it down, the other pier is there and it is available. I could support the, uh, the application at this point, but when it comes down to the budget time, it may be a difficult thing for me to support then. But I do think we should go ahead and, uh, spend the 44,000 out of this year's budget, and then, uh, at budget time, adjust it.
Okay.
If we get, we might not even get the grant, who knows? So we'll, we'll see what happens. Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Hart?
So my comment is, if we're gonna clo, assume we're gonna close it, I would recommend closing it immediately. But we need to do it in such a fashion that they're not gonna go around it like they did Estra Street Park. You know, they went over the barricades, they moved the barricades, so it needs to be in a fairly permanent type of a, a closure, so that they just can't climb over it, or, you know, go around a piece of yellow tape, something like that. And the second one, when I read through the documents, here references a 300-foot pier. Our consultant said 300 feet, yet the other said 480 feet.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that off, check with him where we came up with the differences.
Yeah, so, well, just, okay.
They, they have to do the survey, Commissioner Hartman, so when the survey would actually have the actual length on it.
Yeah, I just would like to have a consistent numbers when we actually apply for the grant, so if you'll just have those two things checked. Thank you.
So, um, we're gonna take a motion on the resolution, we gotta raise comments on that, we're gonna take a motion on that. Do you need a motion on closure, or do you want, do you want that, just so that you're...
Yes.
Okay. So for clarity, let's just take a motion on the closure of Buena Vista Park, uh, effective as, as soon as feasible for staff to do that.
I will make that...
I'm sorry, not the park, you, you, thank you for that clarification. Motion to close the pier, that, the, the pier we've been talking about.
Correct, I, I will make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, that's not for the grant, this is just for the closure.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sachs?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, to the item of 7A, which is the resolution to apply for the fine grant, do I have a motion on that item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
City Clerk for color roll. Oh, sorry.
One, one quick comment. I, I just wanted to say, um, regarding the budget, I, I think we all want to see the budget managed, a tight budget. I know Commissioner, Vice Mayor Coloney says that a lot, but I wanna give you guys kind of a heads up. If we struggle with the budget now to get what we want, and this is the start of a downturn in the economy, I can promise you, we struggle just to get raises, or we struggle just to get, um, first responders to accept a non-raise. So the reality of this is, if we don't prioritize these things quickly, if we can't do this on a phenomenal, top economy, we're absolutely never gonna get this done in a declining or bad economy. So that's the reality. So I think that we need to choose very wisely what projects we do wanna pay for. And when it comes to a community dock in a park that's sitting out there boarded up, I'm just saying, you're gonna get a lot of unhappy people. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. City Clerk for color roll.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sachs?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Resolution 13 dash 20 has been approved. All right. Item 8A, City Attorney, we'll read the ordinance by title only.
And just as a precursor, we did remove nine items off of your first reading, so that moving forward, we're not dealing with the advertising deadlines.
Okay.
And we'll take each one of these, um, as it comes, and explain what we've done to try to facilitate this, this schedule, so...
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2220, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach vacating a public access easement on private property located on Claremont Street and Fremont Street, providing for conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date. Uh, this is one that was advertised, we did reach out to the applicant, and they are agreeable to a continuance. Brian, I'm looking at you, you reached it? Yeah, they do agree to a continuance, so we, in order to preserve the notice, we would need a formal motion from you all to continue to April 28th.
And this is the one also, Commissioner McGurk, that you had last time, you wanted to delay anyway, because you were gonna have some conversations, okay?
Yeah, yeah, this is, yes, I, but that, I'll make a motion to, to delay until the April 28th meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Comment?
I would rather push it to May. I mean, it's, it's...
I think that meeting's gonna be a busy meeting, that's actually a pretty good point.
The 28th is gonna get busy anyway. You think the May one's gonna be busy, too?
Well, it's even conceivable that, well, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but this thing, this, this issue has a lot of problems, I'd be surprised if they even came to us.
We notified the applicant that our, our recommendation is now denial. They still would like for it to go forward at the next available date. Not urgent, as far as our priorities.
I, I do feel like the 28th is gonna be busy, and if this one has, I know there was at least one person that spoke, I don't know how many people will be here to speak, but you had a motion, is do you, if you wanna try to push it further?
Well, I, I don't wanna ignore Hartman's, um, request, but I think you're saying that the May meeting is gonna be even worse, so...
I mean, I, I just think they're all, because you just heard her, they pushed nine items off of first reading, so those are gonna come at us eventually.
Let me stick with my regular motion, because it may not, it may just be, they may pull it, or we, anyway.
Yeah, okay. Had a motion and a second to postpone this item to the April 28th meeting of the City Commission. to the April 28 meeting of the City Commission. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll on that item.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, City Attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 3420, An Ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach Amending the Land Development Regulations. Amending Article 2, Definitions, Section 201, General Definitions, to amend the definition of kennel. Amending Article 5, Zoning Districts, Section 50402, Specific Regulations by District, B3, Highway Service Business Zoning District, to add kennels as a special exception, Providing for Codification, Providing for Public Hearing, Providing for Conflicting Ordinances, and Providing an Effective Date. So, this is also an item that has a newspaper ad, statutory display ad. In order to preserve that, we would need a formal motion to continue. The applicant was contacted, and he was here earlier today, or this evening. He is agreeable to a continuance. Brian, is he still here, or did he leave? We told him he could check it out on YouTube, but we'd be looking for a formal motion to continue this public hearing to either April 28 or May first meeting, whatever.
Make a motion to continue to the April 28 meeting.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item B has been continued to the April 28 meeting. Thank you. All right. Item C, it's a quasi judicial public hearing to consider the approval of plat. This is, will be approval and authorizing me to execute the contract. Gentlemen, this is a public, it's a public hearing. So, this is a time, or quasi judicial, so this is a time for ex parte communications. If you have any communications you need to disclose, now's the chance. That would include site visits, written communications, or discussions with the applicant. Commissioner Sacks, we'll start with you. Anything to disclose?
I had none.
None?
None.
None? And I have none as well. All right. We'll first hear from the city. Mr. Fields?
I do.
Thank you. If you would state your full legal name, your education, and professional background, please, Mr. Fields.
Brian Scott Fields. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Maryland, a Master's in Business Administration from the University of Florida. My position is the Assistant City Manager and Director of Development Services, Registered Professional Engineer in the State of Florida. I have 25 years of experience in land development, engineering, planning, permitting, and public administration.
And you remember the audience or commission was to question him, one of his qualifications, seeing none? Will, any objections qualifying him as an expert witness in the area of land development? Hearing no objections, he's determined to be an expert and qualified to give opinion testimony concerning these matters. Before you dive in, I just want to clarify the reason this item's not continued. I think we talked to the applicant, and they wanted this to go ahead and proceed at the earliest available date, which was today. So, that's why that's happening now. Mr. Fields, are you familiar with this application?
Yes.
Please state whether it's consistent with the comp plan and share your recommendation.
Yes, it is consistent with the comp plan. The recommendation is for approval. I have just a brief overview of some of the content. The applicant is GeoSam Capital. This is the final plat approval for Coastal Woods Unit D, a 242 single-family lot subdivision within a 143-acre area. This is the last residential subdivision in the Coastal Woods development. It's the northernmost area of the site, which encompasses Unit D, follows previously platted phases A1, A2, B1, B2, and C. The average lot size, excuse me, the minimum lot size is 5,622 square feet. Most of the lots are 50 feet wide by 125 feet deep. The applicant initially submitted the application for this in 2018. It was heard in June of 2018 by the technical review staff. I eventually went to the Planning and Zoning Board on November 5, 2018, when they recommended approval by a six-to-zero vote. There were four conditions attached with that approval. Those have since been met. First was that it be approved, all comments be approved by the TRS staff. They have been, by all departments. The traffic impact analysis had to be reviewed and approved by the city's consultant. That has been completed. A review of the plat had to be completed by the city's independent surveyor. That has been done. And then, finally, a right turn lane on Gibraltar Boulevard, the Sugar Mill Drive, had to be constructed with this project. Those plans are included as part of these plans. The right-of-way has been dedicated. That improvement is part of the site work for Unit D. Additionally, just as the commission knows, last year, we adopted new construction site management standards. Those will apply to this project. So, you will see a direct impact on how development will look different for this phase compared to the other Coastal Woods phases. Includes construction fencing, material storage, and stockpile requirements, regulations on work hours, dust control, de-watering, sediment control, construction access, parking, and things of that nature. In addition, just for the record, no burning is permitted on this site. Belushi County School Concurrence has been certified. A plat contract has been signed by the owner. And I handed out a section from our LDR on the detailed plat requirements in Sections 1,007 through 1,009. That is what staff reviews. All of those requirements have been met. So, for those reasons, staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any member of the commission wish to question Mr. Fields on his testimony?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there anything specific as to when the turn lane's going to be installed?
Has to be completed with the overall site work. So, the site work would not be accepted, which has to occur before we can CO any unit. So, all the roads in Unit D plus this turn lane, or one project, has to be done before any unit can get a CO.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Sacks?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Brian, I have to tell you personally, I highly value your work for the city, and I normally try to defer to the expertise of staff. Sometimes I do take issue and feel the opposite. Having no expertise, though, these are personal opinions. Two questions. The traffic impact analysis came back, and I just don't see how 44 Pioneer Trail can accept all of this traffic. Since 2015, have there been any changes that would make this more palatable?
So, the primary off-site improvement for the project is the widening of Sugar Mill. This is for the overall Coastal Woods. And that widening of Sugar Mill from 44 to the multifamily site, I don't know, we're going to have a map in front of us, is required with what is now the Advent Health property. So, that's the major off-site improvement. Now, each phase has individual driveway improvements and turn lanes, and improvements on State Road 44, mostly with the commercial projects that front 44. So, that was the outcome of the overall traffic impact study, was the widening of Sugar Mill. And that was a county determination that that was needed.
Okay, thank you. Another question is stormwater and its retention and movement as a sheet, basically, or directed through culverts. There have been previous complaints that a lot of the water from the Coastal Woods development area has moved over to Isles of Sugar Mill. And what I had viewed was a ditch, basically. What will be provided for the new development, and where will those waters end up, please?
I'm going to ask Kyle to address that on the stormwater side, as far as the Unit D stormwater system. While he's coming up, I'll mention that the, one of the concerns has been flooding on Pioneer Trail. A design has been prepared to address that. That is included as a part of the county's right-of-way utilization permit with this project. So, that repair will be done in conjunction with these improvements. I'll ask Kyle to step forward maybe to address your question specific to the Unit D stormwater system.
Yes. And I'm sorry, Brian, while you're still there, you did mention another issue, Pioneer Trail. Was that project not shut down because of water that was flowing over Pioneer Trail?
Which project?
The last phase of the development.
I'm going to let Kyle address that as far as.
Okay, thank you.
Kyle, if you can step up and carry on. That's where you're in.
Do you swear for the evidence you're about to give? Be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Okay. With regard to the Pioneer Trail, there were some issues with standing water. It's mostly for the westbound traffic. There's been a redesign. Essentially, what they're doing is widening and deepening drainage swales, ditch line, on the north side. And what they'll do, they'll capture and then convey the runoff, and actually take it, and there's going to be a grass weir or overflow structure, and it'll continue eastward. So, it'll continue east in its current drainage pattern. So, that's the proposed design. And the county did meet with the design consultant, and they wanted to have all these issues resolved, or else the county would not issue the right-of-way use permit. So, Unit D was not allowed to connect to Pioneer Trail, either temporary construction or their permanent connection. That's what was being held up by the county.
Okay.
With regard to the storm management system, Unit D has its standalone St. John's permit. So, any impacts to wetlands have mitigated. They have contained the 25-year, the 124-hour, 100-year storm event. So, that's all self-contained. And the discharge is not going to go eastward. It's not interconnected with B1 or A1 stormwater management system. This discharge will actually go west, and it has to rehydrate wetlands between Unit D and 95. So, it's not going to exacerbate or create any additional problems with the Isles of Sugar Mill subdivision.
Yes. I believe I did notice wetland to the west of the project. Is that correct?
That's right. That's what I mean, it has to discharge, has like an orifice or normal water level, and has to continue to feed water into that system, so it doesn't dry up the wetlands.
Yes. As far as hydrostatic pressure in fire plugs, hydrants, do you see any future problems with providing enough pressure for such a volume of homes?
It's actually a separate project, which is different than Unit D. There's actually a standalone project being performed right now with GeoSam and the Utilities Commission, and we have signed off on it. It's not part of the site plan, but it does continue, increases the water main size along Pioneer Trail. And that's interconnected to Coastal Woods.
And I just want to enter for the record, maybe staff can answer. There were discussions with the Utilities Commission, and they were going to defer infrastructure payments. Can you speak to that?
Oh, no, I cannot speak with that.
Okay. That was a concern, because if they go under, who gets stuck with the payments for the infrastructure provided? That's my question. And my last concern, the last concern is the most important, is public safety. We're short right now, and we're going to provide 200 more homes. It's difficult for me to swallow. Thank you for your time. Thanks, Kyle.
I just wanted to remind you all to look at these requirements that Brian has set forth to you, and that is your review criteria. Survey accuracy, monumentation, lot and block layout, easements, those types of things.
Because this is just approval of the plat, just the layout of what's going to go where, basically. Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. We'll have, any questions from the applicant for the city, or any presentation the applicant would have at this time? Just don't touch the podium. Thank you for your patience with all the shuttling in and out. Hopefully, you could hear out there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. For the record, my name is Scott Glass. I'm a partner in the law firm of Shuts &amp; Bowen. My office address is 300 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, 32801. I'm a board-certified specialist at city, county, and government, local, I'm sorry, city, county, and local government law, certified by the Florida Bar, have been for a decade or so. I'm a former city attorney with the City of Orlando, and I have served a couple of terms as a city commissioner and mayor pro temp in a city about this size in Orange County. Been in local government law for over 30 years, and I've never run into something like this pandemic. So, I appreciate you all hearing this this evening, and the extraordinary situations that you've found yourself in, and ensuring that my client and the public at large receives their due process. It's not an easy task, and it's very much appreciated by myself personally and by GeoSam. Other than that, I just want to say we agree with Mr. Fields' testimony and the staff recommendation. It constitutes, under existing case law and statutory law in Florida, competent substantial evidence. And David Shaheenian and Nick Crowell are outside. If you have any questions for them, or I'll do my best to answer any questions if you have. But we support staff's recommendation. We thank you for hearing this this evening, and we'd ask for approval. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the commission of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll hear from members of the public. Some had anything on this item either, I'm imagining?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. So, that skips all of that. Okay. So, if no further questions of the applicant or of staff, we'll hear a closing remark from the commission. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, this is a project that was approved a long time ago. It was designed in accordance with those standards. I find those standards to be inadequate for what we now feel would be a proper way to develop this property. However, that train's left the station. So, really, I see no option other than to approve.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission on this item?
Right here, Mr.
Commissioner McGurk?
So, I agree with some of what Vice Mayor just said. When I discuss the issues I have with front yard setbacks, and I've been mentioning this for years, this is a good example. So, when I met with staff on this issue, I specifically said, this is an example of where we can't change legally what has happened here with this development agreement. However, if the commission stood united on specific issues, although Vice Mayor did not allude to what standard this does not cover, we can see, if we have a united front on some of these issues that we're concerned about, we can do one of two, we accomplish two things. Number one is, we can try to encourage, although cannot force, an applicant to make some changes. There is no incentive to make a change if the commission is not unanimous or has not taken a position on these new issues. The second thing is, we would have something in place for when new MDA's come through, dealing with some of the issues that we have on these new subdivisions that we've seen develop. So, I mentioned it many times, and I use this as an example as, well, we may not have been able to get them to change, but if we had a united front, we may be able to get them to concede some changes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments on this item?
Just a quick one. Since we did have a change in the ordinance to comply with construction sites and containment of dust, dirt, other materials, does the applicant not have to come back and start the process over again?
No. This is for, that ordinance applies to new building permits. So, just, it doesn't apply retroactively.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
So, they do have to be compliant with it, which you said earlier. But it doesn't start them over, their entire process doesn't start over? Because it's a multi-year planning process, to Commissioner Coloney's point, or Vice Mayor Coloney's point, that started many moons ago. Commissioner McGurk, to build on what you were saying is, I mean, was there something specific in this one, or you're just saying for future projects like this, we?
Yeah. So, you know, these are plat, these plats are small. They're 50, you know, what they say, roughly 5,000 square foot. Those are tiny lots. So, that gets into the whole discussion that I've been kind of harping on for years now about smart growth strategies and clustering. And we have these tiny little platted developments with 50-foot lots, front yard setbacks and side yard setbacks[1668.16] side yard setbacks that I think are inadequate. So we've bounced it around, we've talked a lot about it. We've never really cohesively come together on some ideas of changes that we can make, but it dovetails into, or segues into, a bigger issue of going into those smart growth strategies and changing them, which the county is changing, wanting more of a grid pattern, as opposed to a bunch of cul-de-sacs with one ingress and egress out of a big massive subdivision. So in this case, I would have liked to be able to challenge the applicant to say, hey, look, we know legally we can't change this. This is part of an MDA that started with the county many moons ago, which we adopted and brought into, and brought into the city by annexation. We made it better, but if we said, hey, look, you have all your other developments that have met that criteria, how about redoing this one a little differently? And it could have been even possibly a test case of something. But it would take us to have been able to, you know, identify and at least get an agreement, a majority agreement, on what we don't like about a development like this, and maybe kind of plug and chug. And with all of us up here, I think we all have a lot of really good ideas. I know Vice Mayor's expertise in some of the engineering aspects. So that's what I was getting at. In other words, if sooner we can get to some kind of agreement on this, we may be able to apply it and see what that gives us. Thank you, Mayor.
No, it's well said, and I agree with that. And I think we were kind of heading down that path of having some of those conversations about smart growth and all those other things, and I think we did some of that at that workshop we had. So it's going to take some more conversations, because certainly, things like this, we all know the, some of the views in the community, and the disconnect is, you know, the changes we're making, some of the proactive changes we're making, even those things you just talked about, if we can get those codified, you know, some future commission's going to get to take credit for that, is the harsh reality. Because if stuff comes out of the ground, it's going to look different than current, and it's going to have changes based on what we know today. But those are for projects that are being approved today that could come out of the ground way later. So it's, that's a tough, that's a tough part of approving something like this, but the reality is, I think what city attorney has advised us is, and you heard the applicant's attorney as well, I mean, essentially, you know, these become legal proceedings. This becomes, you know, we're acting as judge and jury in a way, and it becomes about, did they meet the evidence? Like, we gave them however many criteria, did they meet it? And if the answer is yes, then, you know, our hands are a little bit tied, which is a little bit frustrating as elected officials. For the public's benefit, you know, there's always this view that, well, you can just say, you can just say no, and, you know, I can give you a few examples where we've said no, and been challenged on that. And that can get costly as well, so. All right, with that, is there a motion to adopt application number S-7-18, and to authorize the mayor to execute the contract for plat recording?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
We'll take Vice Mayor's motion to approve, and Commissioner Hartman's second. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
No.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, application number seven, S-7-18 has been adopted.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Commissioners, you all stay safe.
Thank you, you too. All right, Item D, Ordinance 21-20, second reading of public hearing, which if adopted, amend Chapter 2. Is the idea that we actually go through this tonight, Carrie, or are you wanting this to be pushed out?
I think this is pretty non-controversial, so I encourage you all to hear it tonight. Ordinance number 2120, an ordinance of the City of New Smyrna Beach, amending the Code of Ordinances, revising Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Commission, Section 2-53, to increase the notice required for special meetings, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. So this came up during charter review. Our code currently states that all special meetings have to have at least 12 hours' notice. There was a case within the last couple of years that you should have at least 24 hours' notice, but preferably 72. So what I've done is, I've changed our code to have that same standard in there, and I've also clarified that this does not apply to an emergency meeting. These are special meetings.
Okay. Any public comments on this one that came in?
No, sir.
All right. Any questions, comments on this? If not, can I get a motion to adopt Ordinance 2120?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's get through boards and commissions, and then we'll come back to kind of a plan for the next few weeks, talk about the events, talk about our meeting, if that's okay with everybody. So Item A, looks like we had a resignation of Kenneth Bohannon. Is there a motion to accept that resignation? No move?
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe that was your appointment, Commissioner McGurk, and just so we're clear, I think how we did it the first time, we'll follow this time, is it's his appointment to make, and so there's no vote that's necessarily going to be needed. We just need to hear that appointment, if you have one tonight.
So I don't have an appointment tonight. I've reached out to a couple of people, a couple of people, one person indicated they don't have an interest due to the gatherings. So I was going to put this before the commission. My understanding is there's only two or at most three meetings left in this charter review. So therefore, if the commission doesn't have a problem with it, I will probably choose not to try to fill that vacancy.
Carrie, is, do you have any concerns with that before we speak?
I don't, actually. Marilyn had sent out, she's starting her final draft of everything. They did move through the entire charter as it's in the, as it exists in our code, so they did get through all of that material. The only thing remaining are items that people want to add. So really, the next step, depending on how this pandemic affects our meetings, is that piece, and then you all sitting together, so, and going through what the recommendations were.
In hindsight, I wish we had, you know, this seat ended up, I'd offered, just for the clarity, I'd offered to have one less. We ended up with me having one more. I wish we'd had that as an alternate member that could have been voted on by all of us and plugged in, so if we ever do it again, we'll, for next time. But I have no issues with that. I think it makes sense. It'd be hard for somebody to get up to speed at this point, almost, so.
It seems like it'd be more of a distraction than anything, so.
Yeah. And with the way that they've been taking votes, and those of you that have been here can come, have been at the meetings, can comment, you know, they're really not, there's no chance of a tie. We were concerned with that having an odd number, but there's really no chance of a tie, I don't think, with how they've been doing it. So any concerns or other comments on not leaving that going filled? I'm here, I'm seeing no concerns. All right. That is done. Okay, next item up is, you know, response to ongoing current events, pandemic, whatever, however we want to phrase that. So I'd suggest, let's kind of go through it like we did last time. We've got events that are city events. I think we've canceled all of our meetings, everything through the end of March, right? And so what about other public meetings, you know, neighborhood council type stuff? What about starting now? Because we don't meet again, unless we do an emergency meeting, we don't meet again until April 14th, in theory, right?
Everything that you canceled is up to the end of March.
March.
So we need to talk about meetings in April.
Okay.
That's as far as meetings.
Yep.
As far as special events?
Let's get, hang on, let's get through.
I'm just going to give you, so this way you don't have to look at the whole thing.
Okay.
If you look at this, the sheet right here that I emailed you today, and I gave you a copy of?
Yep.
The only thing that, there was an update, it's almost four a.m. this afternoon, the NSB Wine and Food Fest, that was canceled.
Okay.
So that's a good thing.
Yep.
So, and then you got, obviously, the sport complex, the whole entire month of April, that needs to be discussed.
Okay. So for our public meetings that we hold, our standard kind of business, with the exception of the commission meeting, we could go until, yep, thank you for pulling that up. So we could go the month of April. I would probably go the month of April, just kind of winging it here. What's anybody else's thoughts? Jump in. Commissioner Hartman?
I thought we had one thing with special magistrate tomorrow. Is there, did we decide to cancel that because we weren't sure if there were some legalities with notices?
I think you're right.
At the last meeting, we had the special magistrate notified, and code enforcement worked on contacting all, anyone who got notice of that meeting.
So we're good.
All right. All right.
So any concerns with canceling those, canceling all of these meetings you see before us? With the exception of the city commission, we'll talk about that next. Any concerns with canceling all of those through the month of April at this point?
Is there anything pressing with planning and zoning that can't be pushed back? Okay.
That was my only question. Got it.
Okay. All right, what about the city commission meeting? We could keep the one on the 14th, but authorize Khalid and myself to, you know, evaluate current events and cancel it if needed, if it doesn't seem like the right thing to do, or we can also hold it remotely, which we have to vote on. Right, yeah.
So yes, I think, I think that we can schedule it, we can cancel it if we need to, depending on what the circumstances are, and if we can do it remotely, that would be good, too.
Yeah, at that point, if we're doing it remotely, I'd say it's literally just a, it's almost an emergency meeting at that point, just to talk about current events. So keep the two regularly scheduled commission meetings, not the workshop, not that April 28th workshop event, I would say, just the two regularly scheduled meetings, and then we'll make a game time decision on the 14th. Any concerns or additional thoughts on those for the public meetings?
Well, I think we should keep both meetings in April.
Okay.
Most definitely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We have a charter review committee meeting in April?
We do, April 16th.
Would it be possible to convene that meeting and request to see if they would like to be in a meeting, or if they don't feel like attending and get a consensus? Because they only have a few left.
Yeah. My concern is with this, I mean, current CDC guidelines are 10. We've floated around 10 tonight. There were a few times we were at 11 or 12, but this is a big room, so felt comfortable with that. That one sits, I mean, it's, what is it, 10 members plus the staff that would have to be there, so it's the same thing.
If it doesn't comply, I wouldn't ask them.
And a lot of them are, and, I gotta be careful here, but I think several, at least, are also elderly, which our governor's guidance today was for the 65-plus to shelter in place. So I think attendance might be an issue, but.
I agree with the mayor. Although I wanted to know how the mayor was going to state that the first go around.
I just messed up, didn't I?
They also have one for April 23rd. Would we want to hold that one until?
We could keep that one and talk about it on the 14th. Because, you know, who knows where we'll be by then?
Yeah.
So is that amenable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll leave 23rd as pending. Cancel the 16th one definitively, just for planning purposes. Everybody okay with that? I'm seeing at least three nods. All right. Do we, so we'll just keep going, and we'll kind of make a motion at the end of all this to keep us on the same page. So now, if we think about these leisure services events, it looks like we had a wedding on the 25th. That one's still on for now, and, boy, I feel so bad, there's probably some bride sweating it out right now.
That's the only one that so far they have not either postponed or canceled.
Yeah. And I don't know if it's the same person. Somebody texted me, and they asked me, hey, what's going to hap, what's going to happen on the 25th? I don't know.
Listen, I'll give my flat-out opinion on that. It's a wedding, there's a lot of people that gather, they have a lot of fun, people come in from out of town.
That's a good point.
I don't want people from out of town coming in.
That's a good point.
I know it's terrible to have to postpone a wedding or redo it, but under the circumstances, my biggest concern for our community is people coming in from out of town, out of the area. So I would say, I would support suspending that wedding in a city.
Interesting. Everybody else on that list have canceled.
Proactively canceled.
Except this, 90 people on that one.
Yeah, I can't, I can't support that. And I, you know, feel terrible for the people getting married, but I'm just not comfortable.
And it was the Woodard wedding on April 2nd, Livock, that was the one that, or May 2nd, that was the one that did contact me.
So my only thoughts on that is, if for some reason this is a special date, or there's just, they have to have this date, then if we reach out to them and say, can it just be the wedding party and no guests? Let them have that date, you know, to do a ceremony type of thing, small cer, you know, less than 10. And, you know, and if they want to reschedule a formal thing, or like a wedding party or something like that, then we work with them on that, but.
Okay. I mean, I understand, what you're saying is, they can have the formal ceremony and then the party at a later date?
Yeah.
Essentially, is what you're saying.
I mean, if they would, if.
Less than 10 people. That's what I'm hearing.
I mean, if they're committed to that date, otherwise.
Right, if they want that way, I get what you're saying.
Right.
And I agree, if they can do it by 10 or less people, I'm okay with that.
So let me actually just add to this, I took a note here. So the governor, just a few hours before our meeting, said, I mean, he was, I mean, per governor's orders, restricting gathering of individuals, social and recreational groups even, I mean, he was talking about in your home. He's like, don't have a dinner party of 10-plus people. Obviously, enforcement of that is, you know, not possible, but, so I think, what if we gave staff the direction of, through at least the end of April, no events are hosted in our facilities that are more than 10 people in attendance? And that gives them the option to work with someone like this wedding party if they want to try to scale it down, just to keep the date, tie the knot, have the party later, we can, we can, we can do that. And for those that are in early May, I would just say, you know, we'll try to give you as much heads up as we can.
Well, being a basic optimist, I think it's going to be over, but I think we should, by May.
Yeah.
I think we should be consistent in that we should cancel everything up till the end of April. It'll let people plan properly. Also, when you tell people, they can have 10 people here, we're over the limit, maybe we should tell them seven, but I'll leave that up to the staff. But I think we should cancel all those events, and the only thing is the second charter review commission meeting.
Which we're leaving as pending for now.
And we'll, well, we'll leave it on, basically. I would make a motion to that effect.
All right, what, before we, before we get there, if you would, so did we talk through everything else? So you got this other event schedule, all these other permanent events, things like Wine Walk, they've already proactively canceled that. Anything else we need postponed, canceled? So these are all, these are all taken care of?
The only one on special event, if you go to the second page, you got the Easter Sunrise service. They think that they might have 1,000 people, and they are insisting to have it at that Staff has tried to talk to them, but I don't think they have got anywhere with them.
Is, is that a, we don't give a permit for that, though, do we?
Yeah, it's a special, it's a special event, and they got a permit from us.
Is it on the beach?
April 12th?
It's, yeah, April the 12th.
What is the permit? I saw Nancy floating around up there, she can come in if she, if you check her temperature. All right.
It says canceled.
Says canceled.
No, 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 the one on the 12th.
Refuse to cancel.
The blue, the blue highlighting.
The second one.
The second one.
Yeah. Not the salty church, the other one. What exactly are we permitting, if they're, I mean, if they're just on the beach?
They're mainly on the beach, but they have things in our boardwalk area at 27th also. There's, like, like you said, like I said, there's 1,000 people, they come from the condos, they come from.
I mean, I don't think they're going to have 1,000 people there, but.
I don't think so.
No way the condos is coming, but I think the part that we permit should be canceled, the beaches I can't control, as I've had to say 5,000 times this week.
I would cancel.
Do, if you have comments, feel free, or go ahead.
There's also staff with directing traffic and all of that, you know, police department.
Yeah. So my suggestion would be, we cancel the permanent part, and I would even go so far as to say, I think maybe Khalid and I, or one of the two of us could make a phone call to these folks and ask them for, we got to follow CDC guidelines, so I can't shut down the beach, but we, I'm not going to have cop, I'm not going to put our officers at risk for this, so. That's my, that's my thoughts. Any objections to that?
None.
Okay. All right, so that gets us through the end of April with all those events. So Vice Mayor, you were starting a motion, if you can just put as much of that detail into it, so we have clarity on it, if you can remember at all. Hang on, we got one more.
Just don't forget about the sport complex.
Sports complex, all right.
None has been canceled, and none has been disapproved by you at this point, so all these April activities, they're on, unless if we tell them that it's not.
So did we get a handout on that? Did I miss it?
Yes, it's, if you look at the.
To the right.
Half of the side.
Oh, I see it over there, got it. Yep, 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 thank you. So.
What are we looking at? Where is it?
It's on the right-hand side of the same document. I did the same thing.
Oh.
So it's like two, it's like two sections.
The gray line is the separating.
The gray line, right.
The gray line separates, yeah. So over to the right. So everything through March is canceled or no? Everything through March is canceled, so we're looking at April, so the second page, the April events, we've got some, so all of those are on at this point, and nobody's proactively canceled any of those.
And I can tell you, SVSC Soccer, that my son plays on, basically listens to what we're doing, you know? So, and that's a, so I have no problem canceling this stuff. I'm not gonna have my kid going out and travel on a travel team playing soccer games. So I have no problem canceling sports complex. We can always, if, if, if the, if every, if the, if everything seems to clear up and there's some, we end up in a situation where we have, where we, where we, when we're in a really good spot and we say, oh, okay, we're good now, that's great, let's do that, but I don't want to be on the other side of that coin by disappointing people or having, arguing people what we should or shouldn't do. So I think we should cancel everything at the sports complex for April until further notice.
Okay, until April.
Through April.
Through April, yeah, not further notice, just. Okay, any concerns with that? Any objections to that, just for the motion maker, so we can try to get this done in one, one big motion? All right. Go ahead.
My motion was to cancel all of our activities and any other activities on our properties. So it was all-inclusive, with the exception of the one thing being the charter committee meeting, because I think if that gets pushed off, then we're not gonna have it on the ballot.
The April twenty-third charter.
April twenty-third charter meeting. I still have doubts as to whether we're gonna get through all that in time.
Yeah.
But, and that will be left up to them, you know? If they can't have a quorum, then they simply won't have a quorum.
Okay.
So.
Vice Mayor, and also the commission meetings we're keeping on, so.
Yes, we're keeping the commission, two commission meetings on. And what I would say is, and our first meeting in April, which is three weeks away, will have, we'll have some pretty good ideas as to how long these conditions are gonna last, and that would give anybody in May two weeks to plan or adjust their schedules at this point. But I think we gotta set the example.
Agreed.
Second.
All right, so we had a.
Sounded like a motion.
It was a motion somewhere in there.
It was a motion.
Any, before you go forward, anything from staff standpoint? Do you need anything?
Just to make sure they're all on the same page in terms of, you know, if an order comes out that nobody's doing anything, that Collet or you can cancel the city commission meetings, if that's what we need to do.
Is that, I didn't, I don't think that was in the motion. I think it.
It's a passing comment at the beginning of this discussion, so if you wanna do that separately, something for you guys.
Do you wanna do that separate, or you wanna put that in your motion?
I do not wanna put it in my motion.
Okay, we'll just do that separately then. We got a couple other declarations here to do, so we'll do that.
To clarify the Brandon Center events, the last.
Included and canceled.
Included.
Anything on city property, so.
All right.
Yeah.
City property, city permits.
Wait.
City property or city permits?
For discussion.
Okay.
Babe James Center. Has ongoing activities, so we should discuss that.
I don't know if you saw my memo to the employees, we kept two things open. Babe James, because we have some kids in that building, and then the golf course. So that's only two things that it's open as far as city facilities today.
I question Babe James being open, but.
How many, how many participants do we have at a time in there?
Between twenty-five to thirty-five, and they're separated, but today, for example, Nancy was telling me we had eight kids.
Yeah, I, I think we could leave it to the staff's discretion on that, as to how we can take a little extra care to keep them separated. I just think that not giving them a place to go might be worse. At least this way, we can control what goes on.
And believe me, that's what was in our minds when we discussed, and that's why we kept them open.
Yes, I understand that. So that was, it was a good decision, I feel. And I'm glad that that came up, and that my motion does not include the Babe James programs.
And the golf course. The golf course.
How could I close the golf course?
No, I'm saying Babe James and the golf course.
I understand.
So.
I still can't get.
Let the rest of the commissions, I saw some other looks on the Babe James, so I just wanna make sure everybody chimes in on that if you care to.
Close.
Close.
Unless there's a feeding program that can be modified there, I would close.
You know, if there's an outbreak at Babe James, and we're gonna, people are gonna say, you closed everything else but that. And I understand the problem. I'm on the fence. I don't, I, I don't have, I lean towards closing it, simply because we need to be consistent, and this is very difficult on everybody. However, what do you do with? It's a very difficult situation.
Are, are the, sure, yes, come, come ahead.
Speaking with Nancy, she's gonna be follows, following what the YMCA is doing, and they're gonna be doing morning fever thermometer health screening checks, as well as on the staff. As far as for screening the kids to keep sure, to make sure the healthy kids are coming in.
Yeah. Is Nancy still out there somewhere?
I get, but my concern is, we know that this thing is contagious.
Before the baby comes.
Asymptomatic.
Yeah.
And how many kids pick this up before we identify? And how many of these kids, I mean, I'm not sure a lot of these kids have a structured home life, is if they get sick, it might be a few days before someone turns around and responds to this. Actually, and irony, the irony of it is, coming to the Babe James and showing signs may be the closest they get to the quickest care they can. So I'm not sure I'm helping this situation.
Well, it's a tough one. Help, help me understand, because I'm with you all. I see the, I see the president, I mean, Commissioner Sachs, I'm with you, shut it down, but then I also know, for some, this is, you know, I mean, the governor, the governor talked about it today. He said, so this isn't necessarily specific to this discussion, but he said, look, as this thing drags on, you have other concerns. I mean, there's, there's, you know, many other things to think about. So are there programs that are optional versus this is serving as, you know, the child needs to be there for some reason or another, and is there a way to kinda differentiate those? Or have we already reduced it down to, how many of them are after school, or help us understand some of the, what's happening?
The eight kids that are coming are kids that come all the time.
Just, just to hang out, or?
Well, they come to our after-school, they're in our summer program, they're, they're part of Babe James. We are getting the lunches from Chisholm for them, and then the parents also sometimes bring the lunches also, so our family members do. You know, we will do whatever the commission would like us to do.
Is their presence at the Babe James absolutely required? In other words, are the, are the parent, why are they there?
They have nowhere else to go.
So the parents.
They'd be home by themselves.
The parents are still working?
There might be one parent that's not working, but I can attest to that.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we should go into those details.
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna get too deep, but, yeah.
But I can tell you that, you know, we have the gym, we have the multimedia room, we have the library, and we have the computer room, and we are separating them, and, and outside. They are also outside, so.
So we have, let's say, kids there. We go through another week, all of a sudden, some people are hearing, you know, well, my kids at Babe James, they're still accepting kids. So the question is, okay, well, then it must be okay. I'm gonna put my kid there for a while, and I'm gonna put this other kid there. How do we control this? What is a way that we can say, okay, can we identify the kids that absolutely have to be there? And, and, and try to keep out others who may be in a difficult position, but on a case-by-case basis?
We could do that, yes.
Can we limit, can, can staff reasonably limit to, you know, five to seven in each of those big areas you talked about? And that's a worst-case scenario. I mean, ideally, even spread out more than that, but. We'd never have twenty kids piled up in a room, I guess is what I'm, what I'm saying.
No, we won't, and we don't. And then the other thing is, when school, the virtual school starts, this is gonna be a whole different ballgame, so.
Well, because they might use the computer lab, right?
And there's a lot of kids there, I assume, don't have the computers at home.
Correct.
And they're gonna come to Babe James looking for that technology.
So we don't know what we're gonna face on that.
See.
Commissioner Hartman hasn't even spoken yet, so.
Are, are we teaching them personal hygiene along with all this?
Oh, yes, they don't go into, as soon as they leave one room, they're.
So we could be changing culturals for years to come by the children that we're dealing with today. I mean, that's how we did it in Saluti Paz. I mean, you taught the children, and they take it home to their parents, and, you know, you can change a whole village just through the children, so. You know, it may have unintended consequences, but, you know, there may be a positive one if, if we can use that as a teaching moment also, so. But I agree. I think there needs to be a cap. We need to have a cap, and we need to have a plan. If, if all of a sudden we start getting thirty kids dropped off every day, then, you know, we said, that's it, would, you know.
What I would like to see is, Nancy, if you can identify the most desperate situations, and let people know that the only reason these kids are there is because they really have no, no other options whatsoever. And if we can limit the cap, if we can cap it off, and you can keep them separated, you know, you can't leave a, I imagine these kids are young, home alone by themselves, it's just, that's gonna end up bad, almost guaranteed.
Well, and we're fortunate that our staff knows the families, so we can, we can learn those issues right away. And we can cap it at thirty-five and just go from there.
Thirty-five? I thought we had like eight kids there.
We have eight, but I'm saying, you asked if other kids came, we could cap it. If you wanna cap it less, we can do that.
Vice Mayor, comment?
Well, there, there is a motion on the, on the floor. I would, if it's agreeable with the second, I would exempt the golf course and the Babe James from that, from my motion to close everything, but the other things I exempted. And I would say, we have a city manager, we have an emergency director, and I'm confident that they will make a decision that if there is a problem, that they will address it. I don't, we have overriding standards from the governor that apply to the state, and I'm, and I'm sure that if a problem did develop, that, that they could handle it. So I would ask the person who seconded my motion if they agree.
Agree.
Okay, so just for clarity, that was.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Some life-saving decisions here. I would recommend, and you seconded the motion, correct?
Yep.
Commissioner, that we close both venues, the Alonso Babe James and the golf course. In consideration of public safety, it, it really makes no sense to keep anything open. I, I know there are cities around us that have closed every venue, parking lots, beaches, parks. I, I don't see any other way forward than to close. So that, that's my opinion. Haven't made a motion.
Yeah.
Or should I make a motion to close everything?
There's a, there's a motion on the table for, for these. So, yeah. The Babe James is, is, I mean, that's a tough, we've all struggled with it, and it's gonna be one of those that I hope we, you know, you hope you're making the right call, because it could go, could go either way, because there's, we don't know every situation of every child, but these, this is different than the sports complex. In some cases, these aren't, these aren't optional or discretionary. This is, this is a way of life. This, this may be, you know, so I don't wanna say too much, but it's, it's concerns on, on both sides, so. My suggestion would be this, we had a motion, we had a second, I'm gonna restate it, just so we have clarity on that motion. We'll take a vote on that. If there are further measures you would like to make as a, you'd like to bring up, we can discuss those. We do have a couple more things we have, or we need to talk about, these two, a resolution and declaration that carries forth. So the motion, jump in if I'm saying anything wrong, was canceling all events.
Through the end of April.
Through the end of April.
With the exception of the golf course, Babe James, and the second meeting of the Charter Review Committee.
And the two city commission meetings.
And the two city commission meetings, yes.
Okay. That was the motion, that was the second. City clerk, call the role on that item.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sachs?
Sorry, gentlemen, no.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's check off these two declarations. So we got Declaration two dash twenty, which city attorney distributed to us. This is just extending the state of emergency. I think it runs concurrent with the county's state of emergency. And then we have Resolution fourteen twenty, authorizing virtual commission meetings. And. So, and this would really just be if, if the clerk and the city manager basically would, would call for this. So that would be, we're delegating it to the clerk and the city manager to make that call. So do I have a motion to, do you have any comments, additional comments, on Declaration two dash twenty and Resolution fourteen dash twenty?
You can do them both at the same time?
Can I do them both at the same time?
I think we should do them individually.
All right. Do you have a motion on Declaration two dash twenty?
Second.
City clerk, call the role on Declaration two twenty.
Commissioner Sachs?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to adopt Resolution fourteen dash twenty? This is the emergency, extending the state of emergency to run concurrent with county. Do you have a motion?
The first one was the.
Oh, sorry, virtual meetings, yep, my bad.
This is the virtual meetings.
Yep, Resolution fourteen twenty approving virtual meetings if called for by the clerk and city manager. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Sachs?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I hope we don't have to do that. Having just a regular business conference is hard enough virtually, I can tell you. This would be a nightmare virtually. Okay, so Commissioner Sachs?
Yes, sir.
You had further concerns, further measures? I feel like we can just talk through that now. What are your, what are your proposals? What are your thoughts? I think we all understand the concern, but my, my struggle has been what powers we have as a city, and, you know, Mayor Matt Surrancey, former Volusia League of Cities president, made a post today, and he basically addressed this as a small town, and he said, listen, this is a little bit like trying to have a, you know, section off an area of a swimming pool, and, and say, okay, we're gonna put all this kind of water in this, in this area of a swimming pool. If it's not a regional or state approach, all we do is, to some degree, prolong the pain that we're gonna feel from all these other measures. That's kinda where I've landed, is I'm not saying whether it's needed or not. I'm just saying, if it's not, you know, we can't build a wall out at ninety-five, and so the transient nature, we got people that leave here every day and go to Port Orange and Deland or wherever else, and so my concern has been, we put our community on complete lockdown, which, by the way, the governor's called for many things. If people follow the governor's orders and the CDC orders, you wouldn't see a lot of the behavior we have. And so by that regards, I wonder even if we did do it, how much enforcement we could have, and you get the legal questions of how do you enforce some of these things? What powers do we have to enforce them as a, you know? So I, can more be done? You know, should the beaches be completely shut down? Call your county council. I, that's a. Funny, I have. I'm sure you have. I mean, I've talked to them as well. I've shared my thoughts and opinions, but to me, we're controlling everything we can locally. Anything, any further measures, it's gonna have to be at least a county or regional approach. And every county's dealing with this. I mean, Orlando just did some measures, and the counties all around them aren't, and so they're, you know, anyway. So that's, that's, that's my faults, but the floor's yours, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I share your thoughts, considering the consistency I'm seeing in the counties and major municipalities around us. They're closing all their venues. It's an extreme measure, and I hate to take it. I hate to take the joy away from anybody's life, but I'd sure rather they be living next month or their, any one of their beloved had passed away due to what, what could be construed as a flu by some. But these are strange times, and I, I say, be prepared for the worst and hope for the best. So I would say, take every measure we could, close all city venues.
We've done that, right?
We've done that.
We didn't do parks, I forgot, I was gonna talk about parks.
You bring up a good question. To be honest, I would close parks. I would close city parking lots.
Okay, so we have parks, we have parking lots. I think all other city venues, with the exception of kind of public service venues that we've essentially shut down to the public in many ways, but. Anyway, carry on. So parks, parking lots. What other, what other measures? I'm not saying, we'll talk through those, but I just wanna get it all on the table here.
Boat ramp.
Boat ramps, okay. Boat ramps, okay. Let's talk through boat ramps. I'd put that as parks, but, okay. What other, what other measures are you?
I don't know what restaurants, I, I understand that the state has closed bars and pubs.
Yes.
Is that correct? So we don't have to worry too much there. I'm glad that our restaurants are still able to have takeout.
Yep.
That'll help, just a little bit. But again, I, I would look to other major cities and take steps that they've taken, because we don't know how, we have a small population, and with so many visitors from, from areas where we don't know how much of the germ does shed onto our population, which is just, seems so fearful, and of that age bracket that is most susceptible, I would say take as many measures as we can.
But just to, just for clarity, because I, I don't want anybody leaving saying we, we, you know, I wanted to take some measure and, and, and we didn't take it. I want to make sure we get all the, the ones on the table. So I've, I've got all the other facilities, I think we just covered all the city events, et cetera, but parks, parking lots, and boat ramps. Is there anything I've, I've missed that we need to put on the table for discussion? Beach, we can't control. We, we all know that. We can lobby individually to the county council, as to what they should do, that's their call. If I could, if I, if we had billboards in New Smyrna, that's the billboard I'd buy right now. I don't control the beaches. I'd have to write that email five million times. Anything I've missed?
I, I think we're trying to do the right thing. Act as if this city is our family. Don't act that way, they are.
Yeah. You know, one measure that I think the clerk sent out, that Palm Coast did, which again is a much bigger city than us, because a lot of the things you see, and this is another thing, I, I, I've taken this, is people email me, hey, the mayor of New York just did this, the mayor of LA just did this. I might look, that is the equivalency of Volusia County times ten or something, like that, the, even the powers they have are very different. They have an entire health department and team underneath them. They have, you know, the, equivalating what they did to what steps we should take as a city of twenty-seven thousand, again, I, I don't even have the power, I don't have the expertise on staff. You know, those, those are questions I have, but, so things like, you know, calling for businesses to close, you know, I, I don't even know that we can do that. Then there's the should we question, so, but just so we're clear, parks, parking lot, boat ramps, no other measures really that you're calling for?
I would not want to close, well, we certainly don't want to close stores, grocery stores, medicine shops.
Yeah, okay.
Things like that. And, and, you know, I would encourage people to, if they want to travel, go outside, do your business, come back home.
Yeah. So follow, I mean, the governor gave real strict shelter in place kind of guidance.
Yes. And, and the only reason I'm going to that extreme is because, again, we're a small town, but our visitation is just tremendous, because everybody else is closed all around us.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I mean, I, I can't, I don't think they're visiting here for our parks, maybe boat ramps, but anyway. All right, other comments on, we'll just come down the line this way, so let's hit those three, or anything else that you can think of that we missed. What are your thoughts on?
So my biggest rub on this is people coming from outside the community into our community, and then essentially creating a, a problem that we don't already have. I can be, I can certainly agree with Commissioner Sax in shutdown, parking, parking lots, parks do, I can do parks for a short period of time. I want to not, I want to, I wa, I don't want to have anything that encourages people from outside this community, generally speaking, Central Florida, Orlando, they're all sitting home looking for something to do. And when we, when we have amenities and facilities open, we're encouraging them to come here. When I first spoke about this, that first Friday that we had our first emergency meeting, what I was trying to communicate, especially to the business community, was think, think local, which takes that phrase that's very popular with, with you, Mayor, that you, that you, I don't know if you coined it, but you certainly have run with it, was we can sustain ourselves, but when we have people coming in from outside, it's a deep concern. So I don't have a problem stopping things that encourage people from coming in from outside our community, increasing the risk of this community becoming infected or more infected than it is. So for a short period of time, I can agree with parking lots, parks, and boat ramps.
Okay. Vice Mayor, comments?
Do you have a suggestion as to what a short period of time is, Commissioner McGurk?
I, the, the, I could say to the next commission meeting.
Fourteenth, okay.
This is a tough one. I like the idea that some people, residents, do have a place to go. I know I went past Old Ford Park the other day, and I saw three separate groups of ten or less getting together, gave them a place to go. I don't like taking that opportunity away from people. I see the point of people from the outside coming into the area, because they do tend to overwhelm our facilities, as boat ramp is probably a perfect example. Everybody can say that it's an outside area, and they don't all get together, but they do go into the restrooms, and they do drive throughout the neighborhoods, their trailers are parked all over the place. So I can see the argument that we're enticing people to come in from the outside.
And, and I can take this in steps. I mean, I don't need to do all three. I'm just saying what I can, what, what I can entertain. And I, so, anyway.
Will anybody comment, see if we have enough common ground to get a motion that would make sense?
I, I obviously, or I, I was opposed to the idea of closing all these facilities down. I would consider doing it for a shorter period of time. Three weeks is as long, as light years away, the way this virus is going, so I could go with a shorter period of time, and I just wonder how we're gonna get that information out to people who don't live here.
Press is one way. These, I mean, the, the headlines are, you know, that's what, how the word has been getting out is, the, the headlines, so. People aren't about the beaches, I can tell you that.
And my colleagues, may I share with you, I have photographs of blocked walkover, beach walkovers.
Yeah.
And the beach proximity between the space of six feet is not heated. People are not obeying that rule. So, you know, if we take the extra steps, yes, it's draconian, yes, it's cruel, yes, I'll get a lot of heat, but I'd rather have my people yelling at me than the other case.
Let's let Commissioner Hartman comment, and then I'll say a few words, and we'll see if we have some common ground.
So with that comment, being in the age bracket that I'm in, I went to a local grocery store this morning, who catered to the elderly, and they were lined completely around, almost around the building, shoulder to shoulder, waiting to get in. And this is supposedly the more vulnerable of our population, and they're not heeding the warnings. So, you know, where do we stop? Or where, you know, I'm opposed to closing the parks. I think prudent people should have a place to go in the open air to enjoy some of the amenities. Same thing with the boat ramps. If they're coming from Orlando, they're cooped in their car, they get in their boat, they go offshore, they go down the river, if, I don't have a problem with that, because they're in small numbers. Bathroom, we can close the bathrooms, I don't have a problem with that, but then we're gonna have them, you know, you're gonna have, create even more problems with that. So at, at this given time, with the slow growth that, or infection that Volusia County has experienced, having just been through spring break, you know, and we only went up four, I think, a number of cases, and we don't know where they are, I think that we need, people need to have some kind of an outlet. There's just so much you're gonna be able to do at home, or in your yard, or in your And I would be opposed to closing all three of those at this time.
Support for any of them, or none at all at this point?
None at all this time.
Okay. One question I have is, if we go this route, so boat ramps is, is one thing, parking lots is, is even, is even easy. Parks, how do you enforce that? I mean, are we gonna, if somebody is, is, is at Pettis Park, or is at Manatee Park, what's the, you know, we gotta give the guys and, the guys and gals in Blue some direction here? Are they just, you know, encouraging folks to leave? You know, the, the struggle with all this, and, and I was talking to somebody earlier today, the struggle with all this is, you know, you look at our, as America, some of the things we value, and it's, you know, Declaration of Independence, right, it's life and liberty, and, and what we're having to choose right now is, how many liberties are we trying to clamp down on to try to preserve life? And so you're, you're, two of our fundamental life, liberty, pursuit of happiness stuff, we're trying to balance, and it's, you know, it's not a, not an easy spot to be in, but so, things like boat ramps that we can control, you know, the, the, the argument that I've heard on boat ramps is, yes, once they get to the ramp, and they're in their boat, and they're out on the water, they're not interacting, but it's the, as they're coming in, they stop at the gas station, they, you know, it's the family that just landed from New York, because there's a hundred and ninety flights a day coming in, and so they just landed, they got off in Orlando, and now they come through here, and they're standing in line for to-go at Yellow Dog Eats, and then they go to get gas, and they go on Wawa, and, and they stop at Publix for some subs, and then they get on the boat ramp. So it's not, once they get to the boat ramp, it's fine, it's all those other things in the community that, that cause, that cause issues. And so, I mean, same with the, with the beach parking lots, I would say, it's, it's, everybody else kind of funneling in to get to those, you know, the concern on the, if we close the boat ramps, I think that, you know, that, that, that solves the, you know, the people aren't gonna, they don't have access to the water, so that one will kind of solve, and it won't create other parking issues. A concern with closing all the other parking lots around the beaches at least would be, does that just push the problem into the neighborhoods versus actually stopping what we're trying to stop? And, you know, that was a concern I had on, when, when, you know, the county was discussing closing the beaches, or, or closing the, the ramps, rather, to the beaches, that was the concern. The report that I've heard, what I've heard is, it hasn't been that bad, I haven't, my, my email hasn't blown up from people in the neighborhood. In fact, I got a compliment from somebody in the neighborhood. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm torn, I mean, you, you want to err on the side of caution. I, I would say for a short time, I, I think the next two weeks are gonna tell us a lot. You know, we're, we're, we're about eight or so days out from Bike Week, we're only a few days out from spring break, so we haven't, we don't know what spring break brought to us yet.
Right.
I mean, based on everything I know about this, I'm no, I'm no medical expert, nobody up here is a medical expert. And the reality is, people aren't following the CDC guidelines. There's a swath of our population that are, either, if they're taking it seriously, they're just not, it's just not connecting to doing things like what you talked about this morning. I saw pictures, I got the same thing, and, you know, we can't, we can't enforce common sense is the, is the problem, so.
Mr. Mayor?
I would support whatever, let me just be clear on this, and then we'll move on, and eventually we gotta get a motion so we can all go home. I would support whatever measures are put in place, whatever motion maker makes on those things. The parks, I would say, I don't think that's a huge issue, I don't think folks are getting in their car driving here from Orlando for parks, and I think it would create an enforcement issue for our officers, so I would be in, I, I'm not as in favor of that. We can put out, the last thing I was gonna say is, City of Palm Coast, if you all had a chance to read that, they put out a measure that was, it's voluntary, but it's kind of a voluntary shelter in place, and, but the headline becomes, city is calling for residents to stay, to stay in. So it kind of, you know, maybe we could do parks are voluntarily closed type deal. So that, I've, I've said my piece, I'll support probably whatever's put out, because you don't want to be the person that voted no, and then we have a huge outbreak. But Kyle, comments? Yeah, sure. And then we'll come back, I think I had you next, Jake, and then we'll come to you.
I received a call from Deputy County Manager this afternoon.
Okay.
They tried to close, like, maybe a third of their parking, this is like Hiles Parking, whatever, thinking that that's gonna maybe reduce the social distancing. That did not happen. They're thinking about maybe closing the parking lot completely. I've talked to the beach, I mean, to the chief yesterday, he, he thought about it, his recommendation is not to close off the parking, if they're not closing off the beach. So I just want to make that clear. Because what happened is, if the parking are closed, then we would have the issue with them parking in the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, that's the concern. Hang on, Kyle.
Can we, can we actually close the ramps, since we use fine money to build them?
The boat ramps?
About the boat ramps?
Correct, boat ramps.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, as long as we are consistent, and we're not discriminating, we're not saying, New Smyrna Beach resident, go, and you're not, we don't go. If we close it off completely for nobody, then you're fine.
And I think at times like this, listen to me frankly, I think we have a lot of top cover. I mean, the governor's made it pretty clear, he's supporting municipalities if they take measures like this, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm not so concerned about that, although I don't want to get in trouble, but. All right, Commissioner Sax, comments?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, you know, I don't relish any of this, and I wouldn't enforce this on people, but I would say, here's our example. We're, we're trying to let you know that we really need to close some of these venues, because guess where people are gonna go when they get off the ramp? They're going to Disappearing Island, and there's gonna be plenty of spreading and shedding there. So I, I think we should set that example. The state has closed their parks, they've closed trailer parks and other parks, I think Blue Spring is closed. Yeah, right, state parks, right?
State parks are closed.
Yeah, so geez, I, I mean, it's only a short time, hopefully, and, you know, we can, we can always come back from it, but let's err on the side of caution. I know, nobody likes to do it, I'm sure.
Commissioner McGurk, and then we'll come to you, he jumped in earlier.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm gonna bring any clarity to this. I don't think, the discussions led me not to want to close parks. Enforcement issue, I think, is be very difficult, and I do think people need to, I think that's the problem. I was, Kyle answered my question about the, the, the beach lots. I would be very in favor of doing that, but I first would want to hear from the police chief, which I did indirectly through Kyle, which is like, wait a second, we think we're doing a good, and police chief has, got his concerns about that. So I think that that creates a whole new set of problems, actually could make it worse, putting people in the, in the neighborhoods, so. And the boat ramps, it's a congestion. My, I guess, until I get something a little more solid or favorable to, from, from city manager or the police chief, on how it would work for us to close the beach lots, I would probably not want to do that tonight, although I don't want to put words, or words in your mouth? Am I putting words in your mouth?
No.
I'm not in favor of voluntary, it's confusing. I think during an emergency epidemic like this, we need to have very clear, decisive instructions, and very headline grabbing whenever a city does this, but every, everyone's not understanding it. So I don't want to do voluntary. We take action, we take action. I don't want it to be, we close this, oh no, it's, well, and then a side note is, it's voluntary.
Yeah, good point. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Well, the primary draw is the beach, and that is out of our control. Just as a, a side note on the boat ramps, which I drive past all the time, because it's right near my house, there's, there's piers there where people tie their boats up, I would say that almost on any given time on Saturday and Sunday, there's at least fifty people milling around on the various docks in the boats, putting the boats in, putting boats out. I do think we should have a unified policy for the parks, our parking lots, and the boat ramps. I don't think we should separate any one of those out, I think we should be consistent on all of them. At this time, as much as I would like to close certain of them down, I would be in favor of keeping them open. If the beaches closed down, I think I would look at it significantly differently. During that, the first, the first period of time, I must say, from the people in my zone along the beach, they were split fifty-five... they were split 50 50 as to whether they wanted the boat ramps closed because it was pushing cars into the, into the neighborhoods. Uh, people did seem to get the message after a while and I'll say that.
You mean the beach ramps?
The beach ramps.
Yeah.
That, uh, as time went on, the people coming seemed to behave a little bit better and not park in driveways and all over the place. So at this point, I would, I don't know, I'm, I'm still in favor of leaving them all open at this point. I'll make that decision. Uh, I could see a short period of time, but then again, how short can you make it without confusing the heck out of everybody who's coming and going? So, um, those are my feelings.
So gentlemen, I heard favor of keeping it all open, favor of keeping it all open. I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, I'm trying to, for anybody that wants to make a motion. Um, I had submitted, I would, you know, I, I, these are tough, man. This is, these are things that have, you know, never been done really in a, in a modern society. I heard the governor say today and I, I echo that, it's a tough call, so.
Mr. Mayor, how about a motion from me?
Good.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we close down our beaches, I'm sorry, beaches, I wish. Because the beaches are, yes, that is a problem. Uh, our parks, our boat ramps and our parking lots.
And just for my clarity, what kind of messaging goes within on enforcement? So you roll up on a family in the park that didn't get the memo or maybe they got the memo and they just don't care? What, what's the enforcement, what direction do we give?
I would advise them that the park is closed due to safety reasons. And if people don't know by now, I think it'd be simple enough to put up a sign due to contagion and the COVID virus.
Okay.
We don't want to put our residents in danger, that's my fear. So if I can get a second?
All right, so we got a motion to close parks, parking lots, city parking lots, not necessarily county. So there's, everybody's gotta figure out which is which and, and boat ramps. Had a motion, I'm not hearing a second. I think that one, I think that went a little too far based on what I heard from the commission. I think there might have been some support for, boat ramps is really the one that I heard some support around, so.
Make a, I'm gonna make a motion to close the boat ramps for one week. I'm not making a motion to close the beach lots, which would I be more unfavorable to until we can get some better information on how we can, how, how, how we deal with the negative effect into the community.
Um, just for clarity, in case it passes, effective, you said one week, effective date, end date? You wanna put some clarity around that or figure it out after we?
Yeah, let's go through one week for a weekend, uh, starting Wednesday to tomorrow, the 25th.
Things are gonna be hard to get the word out by 8:00 AM tomorrow morning or 6:00 AM, whenever the people start rolling out.
No, that's true, well, it's, we have gates there, right? They're locked?
Uh, not, not at most of the boat ramps.
No, no.
No?
Some of them, I think, but not like the, the one on North Causeway doesn't for sure. I'm seeing a bunch of noseheads. So I'd say, my suggestion would be to the motion maker Thursday, the 26th, might be easier to get the word out. It still catches the weekend.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me back up here because I think we're all well intended, but the question is how are we gonna enforce that? Let me ask city staff. Collet, let me ask you, i- if we shut the boat ramps down, how would we actually do that? Do you, yes, how would we physically do that? Are we capable? What, what are your concerns if I make a motion that passes to shut the boat ramps down for a week?
If we close it down, I mean, the only concerns is people are using it. But as far as closing it off, I mean, our staff will close it off right at the ramp. The only thing is we, we just need some time to put it out there because people, they go out there.
What's, what's enough time?
Probably Thursday though, like the mayor suggested would be probably good.
Okay, well, how about this, how about, I'm gonna do Friday, the 27th to April, Friday, April, well, Friday, April 3rd, but that opens it up right before a weekend, it might be a mad dash to come in that.
I, if I could add to the conversation, the, the, the people are coming from out of the area and they're not gonna know. And what are they gonna do when they get here? So what I would suggest is leave it open for this coming weekend. Post it that we're gonna close it for two weeks after that. In that way, we won't have mayhem when it, when it does occur.
It makes some sense.
That, that's just a suggestion.
I, I think people, I mean, I can tell you, I, I think people, i- if I leave my house to even go to a restaurant, I'm checking whether they're open at this point. I mean, I, I think people are, are, we're used to an evolving situation. So the, the, when we did the beach ramp measure or when the county did the beach ramp measure, you know, they did that effective the next morning for us and that word got out really, really quickly, so.
I see the city attorney standing up.
Kelly, what's your comment?
Not necessarily legal input, but if you're gonna have an end date, I would line it up with one of your meetings because if, if it ends on April 3rd and you guys don't meet till the 14th, you know, you're either gonna call another meeting to figure out if you want to extend it or?
Or we give some delegated authority to the city manager would also be. A lot of the other communities have done that, just to be able to respond quickly as this thing goes, but.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of my suggestion, uh, although I didn't state it that way, but it would carry us through to that next meeting if we close it for two weeks. Leave it open this weekend and, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how much experience you have with, with day boaters. They don't necessarily listen to the news, they don't follow directions, they show up.
Well, if they show up and the gates go and they can't get in, there's nothing they, it's not like they can carry the boat and stick it in. You know, they, they only have one option.
And I'm saying in, in normal circumstances, but what I'm saying is that this is not normal. Again, I'm one of the, I'm the same way, but this is a time when you check like, hey, what, what's still open? What's happened, so. All right, motion maker was kind of in the middle of a motion, we're playing it pretty loose tonight, but go back to your motion.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion at this time. I've gotta think about this for a second. I don't, I don't want to continue this, this.
Okay, well, I will, I, I will give a shot at it. As I suggested, that we close it effectively after this weekend, that we post it on the site, that it will be closed until our next meeting, whatever that date may be in April.
14th.
That would be my motion.
So leave it open for this weekend.
Second for discussion, how do we, what about the, what about the commercial guys? These are not the problems, how are they gonna be able to get out and get their crab pots and all that kind of stuff? These are not the people who are coming in from outside the area. They need access, they got crab pots out there right now, so essentially that's merchandise that they have sitting there that's gonna either.
Are you saying crab?
Crab.
Pot, okay.
Crab pots, yeah.
Not what I heard the first time.
There was, uh, one of the other counties did address that issue. That said it, it didn't apply to commercial fishermen.
Yeah.
So.
I, I would be agreeable to.
I like that.
Add in there.
It's how do you, how do you get them in and out?
How do, how do we, how do we?
I mean, the barricades are just gonna be like the little better barricades, right? I mean, how?
You know, I was thinking about it just when I was sitting down, what, what we could do is we, we use the barricades that you get filled with water that we use to close the bridge. If we have enough, we could use those to, so.
But then we couldn't move them to let the commercial guys, I mean, that almost creates this, where we have to like manna.
Yeah.
You know, we have to have personnel.
When you fill them in water, they're very heavy.
Yeah.
So, uh, if we have enough, that's what we use.
The question is, how do we let the commercial folks out there who have crab pots out there and, you know, and they're, they're, they're out there fishing?
If Commissioner, I mean, Vice Mayor Collet is saying make it's, uh, on, say, Monday, we will put the electronic signs out there probably sometime tomorrow and just put it out there and keep it out there.
I think what Commissioner McGurk is saying is even during the closure, the commercial guys need access to it and they're not the problem, they're not coming in from outside, they're, they're not the problem. So is there a way that we can think of to give them access?
I mean, it'd be difficult if we're just gonna give access to them because then you're gonna have a specific staff just to do that.
No, no, right, I, that's what I'm asking, I, I understand, that's, one of the reasons I held back on the motion because I wasn't, I was trying to, yeah.
And I think it's water, that access is being worked on, so I don't know if it's open, so.
One of the parks isn't, I know.
Yeah, the one by City Hall, I think it's under construction.
Which is. You know, it's interesting because you, you dig in all these details and you try to actually do, you know, then you, then you zoom out and you, you, you read the headline from New York and you think we're, we're underreacting. And, you know, so it's, but yet you try to actually do it without, you know.
We're gonna get a lot of calls from fisher, crab, uh, you know, fisher, um, thank you. Commercial fishermen who are gonna, you know, they're gonna be like, what are you guys doing? How are we gonna get there?
So I, I'm, I'm not an expert on our local waterways by any stretch, but is there, is this an issue that exists at every ramp or could we say at this ramp during these hours, we have somebody there that basically is letting commercial get, commercial fishermen, you know, have access? Could we, could we relegate it out or do they need to be able to put in at multiple points? Because they don't want to have to haul from one end to the other, is what I'm guessing, but.
No, I think they can get around, I mean, a little further for their trip, but they can get one access point, it would work.
If we said, hey, you show up at Swoop or, you know, pick the most central ramp maybe or, you know.
Yeah, there could be, it could be on the, the east ramp, uh, off North Causeway. That's over by near Outriggers Restaurant for commercial use. And I can't see us putting somebody out there to monitor them because they go out all hours of the night.
I know, that's the.
You know, I see them out there, you know.
How do they, they drive on the beach though, I guess they just go in, they out, like, how do they? Because I got some calls about, hey, why are the commercial get, why are there still vehicles on the beach? Which again, I remind them it's not my beach, but I guess they still have access to the beach via the, they go in the same way the lifeguards or something, so somehow they still get on the beach.
Who's that?
Commercial, commercial fishermen that fish, like shorefish commercially, I don't, I don't know, I didn't know that was a thing.
Yeah, neither did I.
I will, I'll clarify my motion.
Okay, I look forward to it.
So do I. The boat ramps stay open through this weekend, that we post the fact that we're gonna close it until the date of our next meeting or the date prior to our next meeting and that.
Starting Monday?
Starting Monday, yes, they will be closed and, and through your direction, you'll put our sign out there telling everybody that we're gonna close it. And commercial fishermen will see that and immediately call you up and say, what am I gonna do? And we could direct them to the ramp by Out, Outriggers. That would be my suggestion. Close it, close it for the, the two weekends in the time period from Monday till the day before our next meeting, excepting for commercial fishermen who go out in really small boats anyhow. So that it's not gonna be the hardest thing in the world for them to get in and out.
Commercial meaning guides or commercial meaning?
Oh, there, there's guides, there's people that go out and they catch, they catch bait fish.
No, and I know what I'm saying, guides are, you know, people from Orlando that come over to go out with a guide.
Yeah, we, we do have.
We can limit them, yeah, I, I would say commercial fishermen, we're, we'd be drastically reducing the.
Volume, yeah.
Volume.
Yes.
You know, just a suggestion, maybe we ought to say that the specific time open for commercial fishermen. So we'll talk to some commercial fishermen and see what's the best time for them and give them a window. You know, between 3:00 and 6:00, the east ramp will be open.
It's not gonna work for guides.
No, I'm, I'm just, I, I think the, the time is not specific, I'm just saying as an example. I mean, we'll just ask them and see what's, what's the time for them. I mean, if you're gonna keep it open for fishermen at some point.
Yeah.
But just to say use the east side, I mean, then it's, anybody else is gonna be using it. I mean, who's gonna be enforcing that, so.
Right.
Gentlemen, just to share, Canaveral Seashore is closed.
Yeah, it closed last weekend. Yep.
Was that clarification acceptable to the second?
I.
I'm not sure what we did.
I haven't heard a second yet.
Yeah, I don't.
I seconded for discussion.
Yes.
But I, but I'm not clear on what the, what the, where we're at with the motion.
I'll repeat it. Effective Monday, we close the boat ramps to all except commercial fishermen. And the period of time will run to the day before our next meeting date, which I don't remember.
Well, let me ask you real quick, if we, if they open up the day before our commission meeting?
No, it would be closed through.
Okay, yeah, I was about to say.
I'm gonna second that motion. Would, did your motion include keeping it open, that specifying? Does it need to specify that we're keeping it open, what ramp or just?
I would leave that to our manager.
Second.
So I guess, and folded in that's just basically allowing staff to work with commercial fishermen and figuring out the, the mechanics of how we, how we do that. Maybe there's enforcement measures and because the boat and the, the truck and trailer will still be sitting there. So we can even, I, I don't know how we can spot check even some of those, I don't know if the, you know.
It may be a little messy.
It, it might be, I, I think it would greatly curtail, I think it would greatly curtail the, the land, the, the, the folks from, from outside Volusia coming in, which is what we're trying to do. All right, so we think we had a motion and a second.
Also curtail the locals.
It will. It will. Okay. We had a motion and a second. That, that's open through this weekend though.
Yes.
Helping to create a mad da, mad dash this weekend.
There's a mad dash there now.
I know. So why aren't we doing it sooner?
If this motion fails, that will be my next one.
All right, gotta laugh. Kelly, if you would, call the role, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Collet?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Oh, you guys are killing me. Is it proper to stop and ask people why they voted no so I can know how to vote? I'm gonna vote no and I'll say, and actually, since you voted yes, you can make the next motion in theory, although we could go with it, I guess, but, um, I think if we're gonna do it, we should act decisively and act quickly. I, I don't, I don't agree with pushing it out a whole, a whole weekend. If we're gonna do it, let's do it, send the right message and act decisively quickly. I don't know, Commissioner Sacks, is that why you also delayed or you just don't think it's a measure far enough? And are you gonna vote against anything that isn't complete or?
It's not far enough.
But I guess my question is, are you willing to vote on anything that, you know, I don't think there's enough support on the stage right now to go all the way for parks and parking lots. So I guess my question is, if we keep debating this, would you go, would you vote favorably on something that is a partial measure under the auspices of, I mean, look, I wish we could do more on the beaches, but I can't. So I took what I could get with the ramps being closed. Or, or are you just a, a constant no? Because if you are, I think just the rest of us need to know that so we can figure out how to proceed here. I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to be efficient with our time.
Did we not have a motion in a second?
We, we did, we had a motion in a second and it, and it failed. And I'm just saying, if you're, if you're gonna vote no no matter what, then I don't know if.
Well.
I would vote favorably if it were.
You would be presumptuous, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect.
No, I know, I'm, I'm trying to.
You know, sometimes I vote yes, you'd have to bring it before me in all honesty, every measure.
I'm asking you, if, if my disagreement with that, with that measure was, I think if we're gonna do it, we should do it quickly and decisively sooner. I don't want to wait a whole weekend because I think that sends to Commissioner McGurk's point, kind of a mixed message. Like, hey, we're okay with this for another weekend, but then the party's over. I think we just do it now or, or don't do it.
No, Mr. Mayor, I would agree to that, to, as soon as we can.
But it wouldn't include all these other measures, if we're just talking boat ramps. And I know you wanted more, but I don't think the support's here for more, but I think we could get support for the boat ramp. we could get support for the boat ramp if you went along with it. But again, I'm not trying to. This is a weird time. I'm just trying to get something that I think could could go forward. So.
Well, I I think it's already been made clear that I want us to close as many venues as possible.
Agreed.
City. So let's not waste time.
All right. Any other on this item?
Oh.
You want to make another pass at it? I'm agreeable to that.
Well, I I really can't, but I would be more than happy to say I could second any motion that would close it immediately until the next meeting.
I think closing it Friday is, I think, this Friday. That gives us tomorrow to figure it out, work with commercial fishermen, giving staff the option to close it starting Friday. If we're gonna do it, I'd say do that or we can move on.
Make a motion to close the boat ramps starting this Friday, the 27th, up until our next meeting on April 14th, with the exception of allowing commercial fishermen access.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, just for clarity to make sure, okay, I think both of them were actually on the favorable side. That was actually technically slightly different motion. So are we okay?
Yeah, different motion.
Okay. All right. So that was to close it effective 27th of this month through our next commission meeting. If everything drastically changes, we'll have another meeting. We'll release all of this stuff. So we can we can figure that out. City Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sax?
No, I'd like to close it tomorrow.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The struggles with closing it tomorrow is it is 9:04 PM. There's people packing their boats right now. There's there's no way we're gonna get the word out by 4:00 AM tomorrow for people to come in. So all right, boat ramps are closed starting 27th through the 15th unless or 14th unless lifted earlier.
Let me state, I would encourage the county to close the beach and we can follow suit by closing the beach lots.
So that was the next item I was gonna go to. I just wanted, you know, the in between our last meeting and this meeting, there was a lot of heated debate about the beach ramps. I tried to tread extremely carefully on that, Commissioners. I genuinely am very careful when I speak on behalf of the commission. I can't control what other people say. I know a comment was made in a press conference that someone had been, you know, something about the city commission. I didn't say that. I spoke on behalf of my thoughts and feelings and what I supported. You know, these are unprecedented times that we're all doing our best. So ask for patience and long suffering. But we're here now. We can talk about it now. Give some direction from from each of us. This is your chance to make a comment. So I know the footing I have to stand on when I talk to the city or to the county council if I'm speaking on behalf of me or the the opinion of the commission. So now's your chance. Speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
The appearance was that it was the the decision of the commission to take that position, which I didn't really like. My suggestion is that for all your negotiations that you do, I applaud you for that. I I think that's very good. I think one nuance that should have been included is we should have sent the our emergency management coordinator to stand there and support them if you felt that way. Because we have a chain of command that that we should really follow. And although a lot of people might not have thought about it, but it kind of undercut our staff a little bit by by not using them to their to their full abilities. So I would have liked to have seen, I would have liked to have seen that. That's all.
Okay.
That's the only thing. It's it's very important when people see that. And you you were very careful in your wording. I have no problem with that. It's just the the appearance of of how people perceive things is beyond us.
Yeah.
And it just kind of looked that way.
Okay. Specifically, though, between now and our next meeting, when we can comment on this or to speak on it, supporting closing the beaches.
So I make a motion that we if the county closes the beaches, we close the beach parking lots. Get authorize the city manager to close the beach parking lots until.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? City Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Sax?
The motion was to close the parking lots only if the beach is closed, correct?
If the beach is.
Yes.
If the county closes the beaches, which we can't control.
To give the city manager the authority to close the park, the beach park, beach parking lot only.
At the same time.
At the same time.
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cloney?
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
May I clarify just again?
Sure.
This is important. We're only we would only close the parking lots if the beach is closed, correct?
Yes.
That was that motion.
That was the motion.
Yep. All right. So we had Commissioner McGurk said he supported, I forget how you phrased it. I thought it was well put, though. Does the rest of the commission share that opinion that the kind of, I don't know how we calling for the county to close the beaches? What's what was the what was the measure? What what did you say that?
Well, I just said I'm in support of closing the beach lots as soon as the county closes the beach, which we just voted on.
Got it. Okay.
And and you know, and I I think at this point, I'm in favor of closing the beach. I think that we can all reach out to our county council people in private and discuss what their personal concerns. Mine is obviously, I don't want people from outside the community. I want to try to isolate us, the locals, as much as possible at this time.
Okay. I agree with everything you just said. City manager report.
All right. I'm gonna give you just a kind of like a brief on what have we done so far on the COVID-19. Obviously, the the health and the well-being of our community employees, it remains the top priority for us. Since the beginning of this virus, I have appointed our fire chief to be our planning manager for this for this event. And then he also has Melissa to help him out with this issue. But since the beginning, I have asked the directors and the employees to use the best cautions in terms of social distancing, sanitizing their work areas. Also, we have changed our type of meetings in terms of face-to-face meetings. We went into conference calls. Even we conducted, I think, about 10 interviews. We've done them over the phone. We will be doing our second interviews on a Skype. So we decided on Monday to close all city facilities, including City Hall. I have also directed the directors to come up with the plan in terms of the level of emergencies. So we could have people work from home. We have to still have some staff remain in the departments. The phones being directed into if they're working at home, they're actually forwarding the phone calls to their cell phone number. We're providing some scanners for some of these employees so they could operate. And I think that would be a good indicator for us if the governor's called for a total shutdown, that at some point, we will be some departments operating from their homes. We have drafted a personal policy to address quite a few issues that we have came up with in terms of we've got a couple of employees that they have kids out of school. So we have some employees who are working from home right now. We have some employees who were sick at the beginning of the virus, but we didn't know what they have. So they are home. They're staying for 14 days. This policy has been shared with.
Just just to be clear, when you said they were sick with the virus, that not this virus necessarily, not COVID, they were just sick.
With this virus, yes. It's just being sick. And so just to be cautious, we we did that.
Got it.
The policy has been shared with other municipalities, as well as the department heads. So everybody looked at it. Right now, you have in front of you a draft personal policy that will be effective tomorrow. So quite a few employees, we will be sending home to work from home. The maintenance operation, for example, what they've done is they went into shifts. So the ones that they work in the field and have contact with the public, thanks to Melissa, she came up with the program where we are testing these employees just before they go into work, such as maintenance of police and fire and building. Because the building inspectors, they go out and they go to some of these homes. So she's doing that. She's taking temperatures and asking the questions before they go into work. We have provided, obviously, the sanitizer to each one of them. We ordered the masks, they're backordered. But as soon as we get them, we're gonna provide them to anybody who wants them, especially the one that they have interaction with the public. So the plan might change as we go, depending on the level of emergency. But right now, we will maintain some staff in buildings. And if they are to work from home, we're trying to give the social distancing and keep them away from each other. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for city manager?
What are we doing with outside contractors?
Outside contractors such as?
If you have an outside contractor who does our AC maintenance or something like that, are they being tested before? I don't know.
No, typically what happened is we have a contract with a contractor. We call them in, but they're not coming in every day.
Right. But should we be health screening them before they actually come in the building?
We haven't called anybody in, but that's a good question. We'll do that.
Yeah, going forward if, you know.
Yeah, I believe all the offices right now, the doors are locked, so they're trying to do interactions as much as they can through the door.
Right.
And if they have to come in, they're they're being encouraged to ask, but we're dealing with not necessarily personal and hip of information, but with the safety and stuff. They do a thermometer to go ahead and check the contractor coming in if they would like.
Because we have a cleaning crew that comes in once or twice a week. So I mean, I don't know, do they live and work in the area or coming from Orlando?
We have the.
New York. It's a New York crew.
We have janitors that work. The buildings are at different stages. Some are three days a week. Police Department is five days a week. That's the you just approved a new contract going.
Right. He's saying what kind of everybody else were health screening beforehand. Those folks are coming in overnight and.
The only thing is they come in after hours after most of us are closed. Like, you know, when they come here to do this building, Police Department, they do it during the day. The biggest building.
I'm gonna call the company and just ask them how, when these employees go to work, what kind of measures are they taking?
Yeah, just see if they have a plan in place and we can, you know, we'll have that in hand.
For the new company.
Yeah, if there's ever an issue, then why will they have a plan and here's their plan. So.
They're transitioning out.
I know. Yes. So.
That's that's a that's.
Right.
All right. City clerk report?
No report.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Here is a report. We have assistant city clerk that just started.
Yes.
And her name is Sharon. She's from the airport. She just started this week.
Yes, very excited about that. Because I know you are.
Yes.
Any questions for the clerk? City attorney?
No report.
Any other business, any staff, anything that we missed? This is, we got one thing. All right.
Just one clarification because I want to see where everyone's comfort level lies. But in the event something happened, like if the governor did do a stay-at-home order for everyone, are you guys interested in the virtual meeting? And let's say it was gonna hit our commission meeting. Where's, I know we passed it, but would you?
Yeah, that's a good point. So.
Or would you rather have it canceled? I guess those are the the two options you have.
Yeah. With the emergency order that's in place, what I mean, look, my preference is we get together and have these discussions. But with the emergency order in place, what kind of powers do this college and or I have at the moment? I mean, with that, could we can't, I mean?
That's why I'm asking you now. It's not necessarily clear. So I'd rather everyone be comfortable with what whatever measures we do take. Let's talk about it now.
Yeah, okay. So the question is, I think, if governor passes, you know, governor says, you know, more extreme measures, shelter in place type stuff like other states have done, and it goes over when we have a commission meeting, how should we respond? And we got a we got a few things now tied to that date. So I think we just need to give some authorizations to somebody to be able to make some calls on that. Vice Mayor, you wanted to speak?
Well, personally, I'm gonna be out of town for the next two and a half weeks. I'm not going to New York.
Through the commission meeting or before?
I will be back for the commission.
Be back for that, okay.
But in the event that there is a a need for an emergency meeting, I certainly will be available to to discuss that from somewhere else.
Virtually. So you're you're saying if we need to if we need to keep the commission meeting or have an emergency meeting, just take the virtual thing that?
Yes. Yes, I would do that.
That you voted for. You voted against.
And I also. I don't even know if I approved the first time we did that, but I do plan myself around that. But one other thing is, is do you have to renew every seven days our emergency order?
No, I think we just tied it to the counties.
Okay.
It's concurrent with.
I didn't want to miss that. So.
You did.
Commissioner McGurk comments on this one? You comfortable with virtual?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the virtual. However, I think that it's important to physically be able to get together if possible. It's important for government to function in the event of an emergency. And I and I expect us to be able to step up to that plate and do some things that you otherwise may not do because we've taken on these roles. So the collaboration between this commission is extremely important if this situation gets even more dire.
Yeah, agreed. And I think tonight has worked. I mean, it's been interesting, but you know, we've we've largely followed CDC guidelines. The concern would be if it goes from 10 to zero or, you know, something like that, you know, no public type stuff, then.
Right.
So Commissioner Sax and Digital comments?
Extreme times call for extreme measures, so I would approve of that.
The virtual.
Virtual.
So basically, if we if we have to, what I'm hearing is we do the virtual meeting. Hartman, Commissioner Hartman, anything to add?
I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Any alternate ideas or just, you know, still like?
No, you know, I think it's my my background that I was elected to do a job to represent the people. And I don't think sitting at home Skyping is what they expected. If, in fact, somebody is quarantined because they have symptoms, I can understand that. But other than that, I think we've taken measures here tonight that would allow us to physically meet and have a meeting or cancel.
Question?
Well, but the canceling, we don't have that. I mean, we have our meeting scheduled on the 14th. And unless even if the governor says not to meet, it's, you know, if there's no way to cancel, I guess, is the concern. But we had enough commissioners say they're okay with virtual. So.
You bring up a good you bring up a good point. But if it's mandated by the state, then we're prohibited from meeting together. So we have to do it virtually.
Well, I'll take exception to that.
Yes.
The governor tells us that we can't meet. I don't agree that we have to listen to that. In other words, we have to run a government who's running the government. So the virtual, if we got very dire, I can understand the virtual part of that. However, if the governor is telling local government or government bodies not to that they cannot meet, I don't think that's what the governor would be saying.
I don't think he would say that. I think it'd be more the guidance of the limiting the group. So all right, what I'm hearing is, everybody get your N95 mask. We're meeting on the 14th. Unless things have dramatically changed. And so, all right, any other things from staff? I don't normally do that, but want to make sure we didn't miss anything. Chief, anything on your on your side out there? Good. Thanks for being here, Commission. Pretty good. All right. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.